The opportunity came up to launch the Dublin office, move home with my family, and Millennium supported me through that whole process.
Good evening. The School Committee Business Workshop Executive Session of August 11th, 2025 will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Here. All are present. We need a motion in a second to accept the amended agenda for August 11, 2025 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia. The second is from Member Dezoglio. Now, at this point, I'll entertain discussion, but first, we need a motion in a second to amend the agenda for tonight's meeting to move 6C to 2B and move 6G to 6AA.
So moved.
All right, so we have the motion from the Vice Chair. The second is from Member Donovan. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda has been amended. We need a motion in a second to accept the amended agenda now for August 11, 2025 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia. The second is from Member Dezoglio. Any discussion? Member Maxwell?
Did you want to know the why behind it? Oh, I thought you wanted to know the why behind the amendment.
I just wanted to mention the, I know that there are three items on this agenda that I had requested a special meeting for, and I just wanted to say that when it comes to the staffing and the job descriptions and the audit update, I really wanted a separate meeting, a special meeting for that because I think that they require a lot more time and to give them the attention they deserve, I think it would have been much better to put them in a meeting that's not going to be a four-hour meeting. So I just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Maxwell. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so our agenda has been accepted. We'll rise now for the flag salute.
(inaudible) two of the flag of the United States of America and two Republicans who stand one nation under God, indivisible,天地正義正義
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for David O'Hearn, who passed following a courageous battle with cancer. Dave was a proud graduate of Methuen High School. He was a Methuen High School Athletics Hall of Fame inductee, a Methuen High School counselor, and the head coach of the Varsity Girls Red Rangers hockey team. Moreover, he was the proud father of Madeline, a graduate of the Methuen High School class of 2021, Riley, a graduate of the Methuen High School class of 2024, and Kendall, who will be a Methuen High School senior this year. Thank you. We're on now to public participation. Thank you. We'll begin with Maria Figueroa.
I think it carries over pretty well. Good evening, everyone. My name's Maria Figueroa. I live at Tenney Hughes Road in Methuen. I am a grandmother of two young boys at the Tenney Grammar School. I'd like to share my concerns on disinformation, transparency, and accountability. The need for us to recognize that when not aligned, it negatively impacts public trust. We fail our students and educators when we are not taking proactive measures or seeking strategies to properly address specific instances that may arise. When our established school district and elected committee members, who are a trusted source, are not equipped to address, identify, or properly evaluate the district's overall immediate needs, it can be seen as a deliberate falsehood aimed at deceiving our beloved community, especially when there are no consequences for poor work ethics or integrity. I ask that clear communication channels continue to be developed, that these channels ensure and support all stakeholders, including students, caregivers, and staff, that they are all well-informed, engaged, and well-represented. We must establish policies that are aligned with the understanding that clear expectations for committee members, administrators, and its staff are all vested in achieving educational goals that adhere to policies. Only then will we foster trust, improve decision-making, and create a more informed and engaged school community in the face of evolving information landscapes. Our community needs trust. Trust needs proof. Proof calls for action and much-needed transformation. We pay attention to actions, not words. We hear what you say, but we see how you act. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from John Drew.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Drew. Live at 6 Spring Valley Road in Methuen. I am a homeowner, a taxpayer, a parent, and in transparency, I'm a candidate for city council at large. But tonight, I'm here wearing my master plumber hat. I have over 20 years in the trade. I'm a master plumber in multiple states, and working on schools, hospitals, laboratories, and large commercial projects has been kind of my life for the last 20 years. So when I speak about water safety, and it's based on hands-on experience and clear understanding of what the law requires, tonight, you'll be voting to add language to the school handbooks to comply with Mahood v. Taylor Supreme Court decision. And I agree, if it's the law, it's required, then we must do it. But if we're going to follow the law in this area, we should follow it in every area, especially when it comes to the system that protects the health of our students, staff, and the community as a whole. That's why my focus tonight is on backflow prevention and potable water safety. Very riveting stuff. A backwater valve, or preventer, is a mechanical device that stops contamination, stops water from flowing backward into the clean water supply. Without it, or if it fails, dirty water from janitor sinks, dishwashers, heating systems, and chemical cleaning stations can be pulled back into the same pipes that feed our drinking system and our kitchen faucets. Here's how that happens. If there's a sudden drop in pressure, like if a line breaks in the street, or if a fire hydrant goes off, it creates a suction, and we'll pull the water back in a vacuum. So if there's a hose that's in a bucket of soapy mop water, or chemical station that's connected, or any sort of bacteria, it will get back into the pipes that serve the entire building. Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection regulates and requires that these devices be tested every six months to a year, and depending on the type of hazard level, that's what's required. But those tests haven't been happening here, and I know that because many of these devices weren't installed until recently, and some of them are still pending. That means for years, our schools have operated without its critical safeguard. The law also says these devices must be installed by a licensed plumber with a permit pulled. The device is registered with the Board of Health and the testing performed by a licensed testing agent. That process ensures the work is inspected, documented, and without permits, there's no accountability, no inspection, no guarantee the devices will function when they're most needed. And this ties directly into tonight's wellness policy vote, which has a line in there that states potable water. Water refill stations are available at no cost to students in the schools throughout the district at meal times and throughout the day. Students are encouraged to refill their water bottles. On paper, that's excellent, but I have a few important questions for you guys, if you guys can take note of this. Are the water refill stations, drinking fountains actually available and working in every school right now? How often are the filters in those fountains replaced? Is there a written maintenance schedule for those filters, just as there must be for the backflow prevention testing? Will we be doing testing of all the schools of the water quality to ensure that they are safe before school opens in two and a half weeks? And have the permits all been pulled for these backflow preventers to be installed, and have they all been inspected? Because without the schedule and documentation available could mean the fountains have been broken for a few months, filtered could mean the filter's been expired for a year, and safe could mean that it's just assuming that it's safe. We wouldn't accept that kind of assumption for the backflow prevention devices, and we shouldn't accept it for the water our students drink every single day. So my message, I guess, is kind of simple. If we're going to follow the law for the curriculum, we must follow it for every building system. That means proper installation, proper permitting, proper maintenance schedules, and transparent documentation. Safe drinking water in every school isn't just a line in the policy. It's a daily obligation, and it is the law. Our students' health depends on it, and our community's trust depends on it. Who demands it? Sorry, read that wrong. Couple other quick items. The solar, I know, is on there tonight. Just want to make sure that the roof ages are kind of brought up when you guys discuss that, and who would be responsible if a panel needs to be moved. I know that I had to talk about my roof being redone, and that's going to cost me a lot of money to move my panels off. So just want to talk that tonight. Also, the Ranger Club salaries. I see you guys did some due diligence on the market value. I think we might be still a little too low. I know we're in a financial strait, but I think those hourly rates should be brought up a little bit to help us attract some better, or good talent, not better. And before I close, I want to make one request regarding the discussion that will take place tonight about the curriculum. These topics can be deeply personal and can spark strong feelings. Whatever anyone's stance, including my own, I believe every person deserves to be spoken to with dignity and respect. This is not a liberal issue or a conservative issue. It's about people, our community, and the example that we set for our students. How we handle this conversation will say a lot about our priorities and how we treat each other. Thank you.
Lastly, we have Alejandro Baez.
My name is Alejandro Baez. I live on 152 Center Street. Good evening, members of the School Committee, Madam Superintendent, and my neighbors. I'm not here tonight to offer my personal evaluation of the superintendent. That's your job as my elected officials. I'm here to share a set of facts that put into perspective how skewed this evaluation process has been. For those watching at home, DESI outlines the process clearly. In the fall, the superintendent completes a self-assessment, sets goals, and presents a plan for the year. The School Committee is supposed to discuss those goals, approve them, and choose six to eight indicators that will hold the superintendent accountable. Mid-year, there's an informal but public review, and at the end of the year, a formal written evaluation. On October 15th of this last year, you received a packet with a template evaluation and Dr. Quong's recommended goals and initiatives and indicators. Here's what was approved. Under the standard of instructional leadership, instruction and curriculum were chosen as indicators. Under management and operations, environment, and scheduling slash information systems were chosen as indicators. Under family and community engagement, the indicators of engagement and communication were chosen. And finally, under the standard of professional culture, cultural proficiency, and continuous learning were chosen as indicators. What was left out? Managing conflict, HR management and development, family concerns, and assessments. Areas I'd argue are among the most in need of evaluation. The issue isn't that you approved her recommendations. It's that there was no discussion of adjustments. So in practice, the superintendent designed her own evaluation, when DESI, 603 and the code, Chapter 35, states that the School Committee has full autonomy during this process. Now, I will say, you talked about the evaluation and her goals, which was great, but never about the specific evaluating criteria. Okay, let's give the benefit of the doubt and say that there was an objective process or evaluation built. But to grade that fairly, you'd still need full evidence and not just numbers, but the story and context behind them. What you had are charts, graphs, improvements, or stagnant processes and progress that showcase outcome, but without the deeper picture. Meanwhile, an operations and cultural audit sent out in September and due in January still hasn't been released because of grammatical edits. That audit contains essential data about the superintendent's performance this year, yet it's missing from your evaluation. Just so that we're clear, the language of this audit is that it's supposed to examine the current state of Methuen Public Schools, drawing on, yes, 2023, 2024, but also 2024 and 2025. Until that audit is public, here's some context you might be missing. On Indeed.com, our district has averaged two stars in the last two years. A July 2025 review is titled, quote, "Terrible Administration," quote. Our faculty's issues have been on the news like Boston Channel 5 in late 2024, mice infestations, mold, unsafe classrooms, and now again this summer, we have similar rodent issues. A letter from former IT employee detailing inappropriate pressures put on him to do acts outside the scope of his job, and the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination has at least one active case against the district. One review, one complaint, one headlined, and no audit. Alone, they stand as outliers and data points, but together, they show a pattern and a data set. So here's where we stand. You allowed the superintendent to set her own evaluation criteria and completed that evaluation without all the official facts. Now, I believe you know the reality of what students, families, educators, and community members are experiencing, but without asking the right questions, even the right answers can't be processed properly. It's like if a teacher designed a major project but never dispersed a rubric, or if a teacher gave out a test, and when grading, realized the answer key had different questions from said test. Like I said at the beginning, I'm not here to judge the superintendent. I'm here to question the evaluation process itself. Next time, let's ask harder questions, choose indicators that cover Methuen's essential areas of leadership, and make accountability more than just a word. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
Hello. I am Kelsey Shabilia. Full disclosure, I'm married to that Shabilia, and I live at 22 River View Ave. I wasn't certain if I was going to speak tonight, so I didn't write anything down, but I feel compelled to do so. I know that tonight, you need to make a vote on the language for the opt-out policy for people who are seeking a religious exemption for not exposing their children to LGBTQ+ curriculum. And that is what I'd like to speak about. I had gone back and forth about whether I wanted to speak about how you're defining religious freedom, how you're defining the role of public school, all of that, and I decided to keep it simple. Those things are going to be decided by the Supreme Court. They're going to be decided by DESI. What you're all responsible for here is academic success, right? That's the job of the School Committee to ensure that our kids are successful academically. I can tell you, as a licensed, independent, clinical, social worker, that a child who doesn't feel safe is not going to learn how to read. A child who doesn't feel safe and supported and loved is not going to be able to learn math, or Spanish, or anything else that we want them to learn. And you might be thinking, what does this have to do with those children? Representation matters, and I want to give you a very concrete example. I read to my children's class last year this book called Two Pirates and One Robot. It's a cute STEM book about a boy and a girl and a robot who are in a spaceship, and they have to use math to figure out how to save the spaceship, right? When I opened this book and I explained, here are the different parts of the spaceship, and here are the characters, Flotsam is the boy, Jetsam is the girl, she's the captain, and he's the crew, and Legan is the robot, the class spent five minutes going, the girl is the captain? Wait, the boy's not the captain? The girl's the captain? I did not see that coming. I did not expect that to be the reaction. But that's what happens when kids aren't exposed to representation, to different people in different roles that they're not used to seeing on a regular basis. When that comes to LGBTQ+ curriculum, kids need to see themselves and their families, and they need to see families they've never seen before. And it's not to say, you have to be gay, you have to be trans. It's to say that gay people are real. Transgender people have existed since the dawn of human beings. And so, as a public school, I feel it is our job to ensure that people understand the world around them, and that includes people. And so while you can opt out of reading these books, you can't opt out of your child ending up gay or ending up transgender. You can't opt out of them sitting next to a child who is gay or transgender, or comes from a gay or transgender family. That is reality. And so by shielding your children, our children, our community from reality, you're creating state-sanctioned bigotry. In kindergarten, my child came home and said, so-and-so told me that I can't like a person of the same gender, or I'll go to hell. I didn't talk to the teacher. I didn't say, don't be friends with that girl. I said, you know what? Some people believe that, and some people learn that. That's not what we believe in our house, but it's okay for them to believe that. It's not okay for them to be mean. It's not okay for them to make a child feel bad. And I want to implore us all to encourage these conversations, to not shield people, children, from reality, but to encourage respectful conversations. It's okay if you don't agree or if you think it's wrong. It's not okay to be mean. But if we allow this opt-out, children will be segregated in the classroom, and those children are going to feel that. And it's not only going to hurt the kids that are non-gender conforming, or queer, or anything else, but it's going to hurt the kids who are being taught that those children are different in a bad way. It's going to hurt those children who are being taught that and then are gay. The second leading cause of death amongst youth is suicide. Queer youth are four times more likely to die by suicide than their peers. Every 45 seconds, an LGBTQIA+ youth considers suicide. That's not something I'm okay with, and that's not something that's going to boost our reading scores, or our MCAS, or any other things that we are all working towards. So I implore you to vote no. Even if DESI is pushing it, the Supreme Court, stand up, say no. In most stances, I would say, you know what? It's an opt-out. We can deal with it. We can have conversations. But context is everything. This isn't going to go away. This isn't going to get easier. This isn't going to get lighter. It's going to get worse. And I'm asking you all to please stand up now. Don't wait until we can't. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? If not, we'll close public participation. Just for future reference, if you cannot make a meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to Martha Saroyes@masirois@methuen.k12.ma.us before 3:00 PM on the day of school committee meeting. At this point, we're moving on now with our amended agenda. Now, here is 6C. We need a motion in a second to approve moving forward with the select solar panel project for the Tenney, CGS, and Timony schools.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabilia, second from the Vice Chair. We'll begin with discussion. I think it might be good to probably bring up the representative from select to share some information with us, and we'll go from there.
So just to introduce for the whole committee, the mayor has had some conversation over the past two-ish months, bringing us back together to have a conversation about solar panels. We were having this conversation about a year ago. That process, unfortunately, was very rushed, and we didn't, we weren't able to see that whole process through at a school level or a city level. So I think with time on our side, we started having conversations in late May, early June. The building subcommittee amongst you all had a conversation a few weeks ago. David and his colleague did come to share sort of where we are and our thoughts to move forward. And there's, there are financial incentives to this, which I think is what I know for myself and the mayor. We're hoping to have some of those opportunities to increase our financial incentives for the schools. So we want to take this opportunity. Again, we're looking at some different variations than we did a year ago when we had this conversation. So, and for, you know, what I hope is obvious reasons, the CGS and the Tenney roofs are new. The Timony roof and the project we'll talk about, because that's contingent upon certain things happening. But, you know, we were able to see, again, David and his colleague at the subcommittee. He also came to the city to talk about it with the city team. So this is a larger conversation at the city level, because those are city-owned buildings, but we need to all be in lockstep with being able to but we need to all be in lockstep with being able to move this project forward. So that's why the motion is the way it is today, in order to move this conversation, if there is support of the committee, to move this conversation for the mayor and the chair of the city council to then have the conversations at the city level about this project, because there are potential implications immediately, and that could, you know, impact FY26, certainly FY27, with the timeline that David will share today. So, just to give it some context about why we're here, having this conversation a year and a few months later than we were last year, but we're in a very different place, I think, with understanding, with process, you know, and how we want to move forward. It's all yours.
There we go.
There we go.
That's better. Thank you for the introduction and for having me on the agenda so early in the evening, and I think you have the packet. Is it on the screens, or it's?
Not on the screen.
That's okay. I just wanted to... Yeah, I mean, I really can, I think, verbally go through some of the key points.
The school committee has it though.
Yeah, it's in the agenda packet. So, yeah, I think a couple of things to note. These three schools, the Tenny, the comprehensive grammar, and the Timony are selected, and we've been focused on because all three of them were pleased to, to share, I think as of May, have received what's called the Interconnection Services Agreement, or ISA, from National Grid, which is the electric utility for all three, which is essentially the green light from the utility standpoint to construct a system and tie it behind, you know, the electric meter for each building. It's, it's been quite a long road to get there. We actually applied for that Interconnection Services Agreement way back in late 2023. And it was, all, all three of these projects were kind of waiting behind what's known as a group study. It's an engineering study that National Grid was doing of many prospective projects in this area. So we got the good news in the, in the spring that we would be allowed to construct these in pretty short order. So what really remains is, you know, the approval of this body as well as, you know, the city council next, if this were to go forward at this meeting in terms of contracting these projects. And then getting ready for installation. And as the superintendent noted, you know, installation timelines can vary, but it is certainly plausible that we could have, you know, systems on the roof by the end of the year, except for the Timony, which we can, you know, deal with as a separate kind of topic with the roof needing replacement there. But for the other two, you know, certainly having a project on the roof by the end of the year is still feasible, and having it turned on by early 2026 is, is, is likely if that, you know, we achieve that first goal. So I think, you know, it could certainly impact your, you know, second half of the current fiscal year, right, in terms of the savings, which would be great for the district. So I think, you know, someone brought it up during, in public comment, too, the roofing kind of consideration. So we know that the Tenny and the CGS schools have almost brand-new roofs, you know, two or two years or less, which is a great time to install a system. You do want, with these being twenty-year agreements, where Select, our company, would be, you know, selling the energy from the systems to the district. You want to know that the system can remain on the roof for twenty years without needing a large-scale kind of replacement of the roof, which would require moving equipment around, as, as noted. So those two are in great shape as far as their, their expected lifespan. The Timony is kind of on the upper, other end of the spectrum. It needs replacement before we would ever consider putting a solar project on, and that is considered in the, the contract documents, where it kind of notes that one of the things that would need to happen first is replace a roof and make it ready for a solar system. So it is certainly on our radar, you know, whether that happens in the summer of '26 or the summer of '27. I think either scenario would be, you know, feasible, and the sooner the better in terms of savings potential. But we certainly have the ability to kind of put the projects on, you know, pause, or that particular Timony project on pause for, for as long as it's necessary to get the roof done. But, so we've taken that into account. I think the, the numbers that you were shown in the agenda packet were the same ones that we looked at on July 22nd at the facility subcommittee meeting with several members of the committee here, and they've actually gotten better, which is, I don't get to say that all that often, but the reason is, the numbers that you saw on the 22nd of July were based on the SMART program that is current and in effect. It's a state incentive program that basically provides, you know, a monetary incentive to the owner of the system, which in this case would be Select, our company, to produce clean energy for twenty years. So the new iteration of that program, they're referring to as SMART 3.0, is not yet available, but will become open to applications on October 15th in just a couple of months. And we're already, you know, queuing up applications for these projects to go into that. They're of such a size that they're actually kind of like, there's a set aside. They will get incentives. It will not be competitive with other projects, and it's quite a bit more generous than the current SMART incentive. So we've been in an environment for the last five or so years at least of declining incentives, but now we're about to go up in incentives from the state, which is great news for these projects, because they're eligible and they should absolutely receive this higher incentive. And that means, again, we get that incentive, but we have to lower your electricity rates, the power purchase agreement rates proportionally, because we're bound by the, the terms of the power options procurement, which is essentially a competitive procurement. We want in advance to be able to do projects like these with municipalities, other state agencies, public entities. So essentially, yeah, we get more support from the state. It gets passed on to the district as savings via a lower purchase rate for the electricity. So I did send out, you know, I think it was just probably after the deadline to include in this new, for this meeting's packet, but essentially, yeah.
I'm sorry. We're gonna, we're gonna show the new one.
Oh, cool. All right.
Apologize.
Yeah.
It's got the new column of numbers. Everything else is the same.
Yeah, and I think...
The new column that we have.
That, yeah.
No. So the new column is, he's gonna show you, we asked to have him put in, like, what's the annual for each school, so that we had a better understanding. It's not in the packet that's in front of you. I'm gonna have Lisa show it right now, so you guys see it. This is what he sent me recently.
Yeah, so that's the, the effect of that SMART incentive coming into play with the, you know, you can see, there's lower rates kind of shown per project throughout, but it's, you know, going from, you know, 4.1 million kind of net over twenty-year savings across the three to a little more than, than 5.5 million. So a nice increase. And then annual, we just did the average annual, you know, we're around 275,000 per year average savings. You'll see a little bit lower than that at the start, because we're assuming that the electric rates that you're avoiding paying to the utility, you know, will escalate over time, three percent a year. So the savings sort of twenty years out are the highest, you know, nominal terms, but, but that's the average twenty-year. So that's great news. We, you know, I think that's pretty much, I think, a lot of the important material. I think, just to kind of compare, I think I was here back in last June, 2024, you know, what's different this time, obviously, is we're talking about projects that actually have interconnection approval. Last time, we were under some time pressure from the utility itself about, you know, do you want to go forward with a study so that you can see if you can get interconnection approval on two different projects, right? It was the nine, nine branch and the Marsh School. So, yeah, we're in, we're in a green light environment here now with the utility, which is great, and we're just looking for, I guess, a green light at the school committee and city council. And we're always a green light, ready to build projects on, you know, rooftops that are, that are eligible, which these are, so.
At this point, I would add, I believe the engineering folks have been out to all three sites, and that is concluded, as well as your safety team. Is that, am I understanding that?
Yeah, so the structural engineer, you know, is a contractor, you know, it's a third-party public professional engineer that visited each of the schools, wrote up a report. There, there was a report issued for all three. I think we are, we're pretty close to finishing our redesigns. Just a few things changed, but size-wise, I think we're gonna end up in just about the same place that we are on this, on these slides. But we'll, you know, finish that up before, you know, we're in final contracting in hopefully a few, you know, weeks or a month or so. But the other thing about safety, we have an in-house safety officer that, that's all he does is make safety plans for installations. So, you know, he works closely with our, we have a project manager. We actually have a, a pre-installation project manager who kind of works with, you know, Brustella and the, the facilities team, once the projects have been contracted, to come up with a, you know, day of, you know, start of installation plan. This is all after the city permits, the projects, electrical and building permits. So there's, there's quite a few things that we need to cover, but they're all part of the standard process. We'd have a project manager from Select dealing with each project, probably the same person for all three, just for efficiency sake, and then a safety officer that's approved a safety plan for the installation. You'll likely see some, you know, temporary safety rail on the roof, but it comes off afterwards and that type of thing. So, and then, yeah, we've talked, I think, about personnel and, you know, the fact that we, you know, Select is one of our largest, you know, markets is really the public education. So we're in schools pretty much every day and know the whole, you know, Cory checking procedures, and our, our team's very experienced with all that. So whatever is required by law, or even required by the schools, you know, beyond that is something we can accommodate.
Before we open this up, I just want to mention briefly that this conversation with Select and superintendent myself and other city officials has been ongoing now for the past couple of months. And I think that this conversation, while it was rushed, while there were concerns last year, I think that now we are in the midst of a much different context than we were in last year, namely by way of the need to identify new ways of saving money with the goal not necessarily of taking dollars off the table, but really to free up money for preserving teacher salaries and the like going forward, especially as we look out at fiscal year '27 and beyond. And so just in terms of this conversation, I think this is a great opportunity for us to proceed with additional conversations on this issue, bring it before the city council as well, but ultimately aim to achieve some much-needed capacity expansion, so to speak, for our schools. With that, I'll open it up for discussion. Member Maxwell?
So I have a couple of questions. I know that the Tenny roof and the CGS roof have been replaced, but I know last year at one point, the Tenny roof had some issues and was leaking, or there needed to be a repair, or maybe that was the CGS. But I know one of the two schools had, we were talking about having a new roof and it needed repairs. Has that, has, has those repairs taken place and have they been inspected to know, like, so we know that those roofs can in fact support the solar system, the solar, yeah, the solar system?
Yep.
Just sounded weird. And then my other question is, I'm under the impression that if we have a roofer go on the roof to, let's say, shovel snow or whatever, it voids the warranty of the solar panels. So, you know, that would be of concern to me. And then the last thing I would mention is, I know you said that these last for twenty years, and it's a twenty-year kind of package, but what happens at the end of twenty years? Where do these, where do these broken systems go? Where do, where does it go?
Yep.
Briefly, I just want to mention one other thing before the answer's provided. I forgot to mention this very important point regarding, namely, the Timony roof. So this is an opportunity, if we were to hypothetically move forward with having the solar panel project underway within the city, it opens the city up for the opportunity to seek grant funding for various capital projects, especially in the context of, say, a new roof that would be involved here. And so we've begun the process of trying to identify potential grant opportunities as it relates to being able to replace the Timony roof, but utilizing grant funds that would be opened up as a result of this. And we're still in the process of trying to finalize exactly what that would look like, but potentially, we could be in the market to have a total replacement of the Timony roof via grant funds as a result of this. I don't want to speak to that as a guarantee. We, of course, would have to ultimately be approved for that grant funding. However, this opens the door to that. Just wanted to share that.
Yeah. So I think I heard two questions. One about sort of, you know, snow and shoveling around the arrays. With that one, we did actually talk about that a little bit at the facility subcommittee, and I said I would go kind of check with the team, what we've seen in the past. I know you typically would be, well, I had a question, I guess, about, you know, I think this was in maybe 2015 during the, the snowmageddon winter, where there was kind of repeated heavy snowstorms, and they just accumulated on the roof, where, you know, was there, I think, there's certainly a scenario, if you had enough snow and it was like above what the, the code sort of anticipated in terms of weight, which I think is very rare nowadays, but could, you know, theoretically happen. You might have a structural engineer on behalf of the school say, hey, look, there's a, you know, you're above what the code anticipated, what the building is, you know, designed to hold, and you need to remove some weight. So it could happen. I think it's incredibly unlikely, but if it were to happen, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. One is, the solar arrays won't be covering 100% of the roof surface. There'll be, you know, pathways. There will be certainly areas around the edges. And in some cases, like CGS, I think in particular, there's just large areas of the roof that don't have solar panels on them, because they weren't, they really weren't qualified in by the structural engineer, and we hadn't really anticipated putting panels there anyways. But, so those areas that don't have solar panels would be probably the first and easiest ones, if you needed to shovel for some reason, to just get rid of some snow weight. If you needed to go beyond that, and it was within the sort of area that the solar panels are in, because it's a power purchase agreement, we own the system, it would be our, our job to respond to any kind of emergency, you know, call that you might get from, you know, your structural engineer saying, and it probably, you probably would have some notice, because it would be like, not the first storm of the season, but maybe the third or fourth or fifth, where, you know, there's a lot of accumulation. But, but that, we could, yeah, in an emergency situation like that, where someone's with a, you know, with the authority to say, you need to shed weight, we can go in there and remove some snow if we had to. But we would want to do it, just because it's our, you know, a system that we know how to work around. We would definitely shut it down electrically before we did anything like that. But it's something that could be addressed. The warranties, you don't need to really, you don't need to worry about those, as long as you don't have your own staff touching the array, because the warranties are all something we, you know, as a system owner, we have to worry about manufacturer warranties and using them, you know, if we need to replace panels. It's really, the risk is on us as the owner of the system to deal with all that. But we usually just ask, you know, it's in the contract. It's like that we're the only ones that get to touch the system. And you had a question about, I think, the, what happens at the end of the 20-year term. So, yes, by the standard provision would be at the end of the 20 years, it's our job to, it's our obligation legally to come and take it all off the roof. So what we do with it is really, you know, up to us. I mean, there's, there's panel recycling available. There's ways of, you know, selling it to the secondary markets, other countries that might find it useful. Even, you know, panels still work after 20 years. A lot of times they just don't produce as much electricity as they did at the beginning of their life, and that's, that's typical, expected, but they can still be useful. So there's a lot of ways we can, we can remarket, we can recycle, but you don't have any cost at the end of the term. You could also, you could also mutually agree with us to extend the term for four, five more years. I think you'd have to, you know, get a pretty good sense of if your roof is able to go five more years without concern before you would do that. So that's why we go with 20 years. It tends to be sort of like a, a good alignment with the roof time, with the roof lifetime, sorry. So, but there's some options, yeah.
So within that timeframe, well, so let me back up. So just to give you an idea, snow on the roof is 20 pounds per cubic square foot. So that's about 20,000 pounds on just a moderate-sized house. So shoveling off the roof is always a good idea, especially being a flat roof. And with old buildings, we need to keep an eye on that. But as far as the, like, extended five years, I, I would just ask, if, if within that 20 years we do need to replace the roof, do you come, take off the panels, and then reapply the panels if within? if within that 20 years we need a new roof?
Yeah, we would. I mean, it's, it's, we're trying to pick roofs that are able to go the 20-year term without doing that because it is, as someone I think earlier said, it's, it's, there's a cost to doing that and it would not be our cost, it would be the district's cost if you had to have us remove system. So we have an entire maintenance team out of Hopkinton, Mass. that can do that. It's a special services project, we call it.
Super expensive, right?
Yeah, it can be. So, I mean, it might involve moving the panels to a different area of the roof that's open, or it might involve taking them off the roof entirely and then putting them back on. But either way, it's a lot of labor, it's really, there might be some new materials involved, but most of it's labor time. It has to be done, you know, as you can imagine, very safely organized manner and it's just, it's a project. So we, that's why we're really hoping to pick roofs like the Tenny and the CGS, whoops, to install on this year while they're, you know, still extremely new and they really should be lasting you 25 to 30 years, not just 20. And so I think, you know, certainly the roofer that installed it is, I think, going to be, you know, comfortable with, with it. And we install on roofs that are older. We do go up, you know, into the eight, 10-year-old range, but it's really at the, kind of the discretion of the roofer and the owner of the building and us altogether. But two and two-year-old roofs are prime targets, so.
So who does the inspection, just one more question, sorry. Who does the inspection on the roof to make sure that it is in fact, like even though it's new, that it is in fact safe to do it? The city inspector or like if you have an inspector?
So when you say safe, there's, there's kind of a couple of aspects. There's structural safe, which is that we have done, done that through a contractor, a professional engineer that has to, basically we submit it with the permit package. We have a structural affidavit saying this, it's really breaks it down by region of the roof. So there might be many roofs within, especially at a school like Timony, I know there's like multiple different structural roofs, different parts of the building, and they all have different like maximum additional weight carrying capacity. So basically they're, they're saying, well, you're already gonna, no, I've never seen any structural engineer assume that snow is getting shoveled off the roof. The assumption is it's staying on the roof no matter what. And it would only have to be, you know, it's like an emergency measure. But then they're saying, well, if the worst case scenario came to pass with the snow and other, other loads that are already on the roof, like the HVAC systems, here's how much more you can put on with the solar system all in. And it's, it depends on the roof, but it tends to come in between like three pounds and like 20 pounds per square foot. It really depends on how new the building is, the way it was engineered, but sometimes it's, it's not a lot that we can put on, so we have to take that into account with the designs. And we get a very detailed, you know, engineered design from our racking manufacturer that shows exactly how many ballast blocks, the kind of concrete blocks that we can put in each place. And sometimes we can't put as many as be, you know, might otherwise because of the structural constraints. But that all just goes into the application for the building permit. So the city of Methuen's, you know, called the Authority Having Jurisdiction or AHJ will be the one to say this, this passes muster with the code. They might have some feedback, but it usually goes through pretty smoothly because we've kind of figured that all in ahead of time. But, so that's, that's really like the safety as if you might be thinking of, you know, the membrane itself in terms of the roof membrane, its watertightness and all that. We've, we've been on the roofs recently, actually. I think we did a revisit with our, our team just to look at the electrical room and the roof and we would, we certainly, we're not roofer, you know, we're not roofing contractors, but we make note if we see like major issues, you got, you know, big pond here and, or something. We didn't see anything on those, the two new ones, right? The Timony, we wouldn't touch right now, you know, for anything because it needs to be replaced and we all know that. So the, I think if you want any additional sort of, I guess, certainty that you're looking for, you, you could get from your current roofing consultant or from, you know, Bruce, Bruce Stella's team, but I think they've all gotten, you know, comfortable with that, those two. There is a, there is a definite process that we're going to go through though with, you have active warranties on the Timony, I'm sorry, on the Tenny and the CGS from whichever manufacturer. I forget if it's Firestone or one of those membrane manufacturers. So that's the warranty that we were pledging to keep intact. So we're, we're going to go through a paperwork process with that manufacturer and say, here's what the plan is, this is what the ballast plan looks like, and get their sign off in advance to say, okay, you can do all that, you just need to tell us, you know, when you're done. And they may require a, an inspection post-installation so that they can sign off and say everything was done, up to ours, you know, specifications and your roof warranty is all good. We've never had a roof warranty be voided by anything we've done. So that's part of the standard, you know, we want you to have what you, what you have enforced now be, survive the installation and go, go to the term that you have it for, so.
Vice Chair?
I just have one question when it comes to snow. So I know just on my own home, my solar panels, panels after it snows, as they warm up, all the snow comes crashing down at the same time.
Right.
Literally broke my patio table in half with the weight of the snow. So what kind of protections are we going to have that when that happens, when are, and if there's somebody walking by, like are we going to have something that makes sure that that snow is not going to hurt somebody?
Yeah, so, so pretty easy on these three roofs because they are, they are pure flat roofs. There's like a one degree pitch maybe for drainage. So our panels are going to be tilted five to 10 degrees to the south or thereabout south. So there, there won't be any way for the snow to get off the edge of the roof because we're also have, we have to set back from the edge of the roof. I believe on these it's six feet. So you're going to get sliding off the panels hopefully because that helps boost production that day, but it's going to go like to the bottom of the panel and just sit there. It can't get to the edge of the roof. But yeah, if we do it on asphalt shingled roofs, I don't know if you really have any of those, but if you did, we would put snow guards or something like that if it's a walkway.
Great, thank you.
Member Willette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Initially Branch Street was part of the initial proposal. Why was that taken off the table? And is that something maybe down in the future if we are agreeable as a community? If we enjoy the savings, is that something that as a part of maybe a second wave, Branch Street could be reintroduced? I know we had some initial concerns and I think the committee served its purpose and it was revisited by the mayor. And I think the fact that we're getting additional savings proved the worth of those initial conversations and going back to the well, so to speak. But obviously, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but Branch Street, it was taken off the table. Is it something that might be revisited in the future?
Yeah, I, I definitely think it could be revisited. I'd love to see it revisited. We had, for those maybe, well, just to refresh, my memory of it's pretty, pretty fresh. The nine Branch Street, we had originally proposed a canopy system in the parking lot that you can, you know, park your car under. That was the lion's share of it. And then there was also like a rooftop system on both roofs, actually the main headquarters building and then like the gym next to it. So altogether it was like, it was over 500 kilowatts, which is bigger than the three we're talking about here by a little bit. But I think what we learned was that the roofs are actually more midlife, at least the main headquarters roof. So they're not the best candidates for all the reasons we just talked about because there's a substantial risk you would have to like take the panels off the roof in 10 years or something. We don't really want to have to do that. So, but I would say that the canopy by itself is a pretty good sized, great sized system. And so I think doing a canopy, if, you know, if the district feels comfortable with the layout and it might be like a repaving project, I think maybe in the works or something ahead of time, it's not, not really, just whatever, whatever the site needs from your point of view. The good news is that this new smart incentive I was talking about, you would, there's a, what they call an adder for canopies where they give you even more money because canopies are more expensive to construct, but then they give you more incentive to do it. So it's a, it's a better incentive for canopies than what we currently have again. So I do think it would be financially quite a boon for, for the district and as, you know, covered parking and just a lot of benefits to it. But the main, the main steps with that one is we, basically we about a year ago decided to not pay into this impact study that the utility wanted to do. I'm not sure if we applied again, if they would require that impact study or not. They might, so probably a good chance they would. And we would just want to be in a position so that we don't kind of do a repeat of last time where we probably would contract it before we apply in for interconnection because we think we'll get interconnection at some point. We just might have to pay a pretty, you know, steep fee to, to go through that process and we would like to be under contract before we kind of commit that money, was kind of the conversation last time. So it would be, yeah, it would be starting from, you know, scratch on the interconnection, but I think you could probably get an interconnection approval by early next year if we started, you know, say this fall. And I think, yeah, it's, I think part of it was simplicity of just bringing you three projects that are already got, you know, interconnection approval, their rooftops, their schools, just kind of keep that simple so we can get something kind of formalized and get started on those. But if there's appetite for a canopy, I'm more than happy to, to refresh that with the new incentive and kind of include that. It would, it would follow on a different track though because it doesn't have interconnection approval yet. So it would take a little longer with the utility, that's all. But I do, yeah, I think it's a good project there.
Member Shabelia?
The engineer reports that you folks had put together, will those reports say in the instance of a snowmageddon, at what point we should be reaching out to you folks? Should shoveling need to occur?
So I think the, what the, we can share the reports. I think we're having a conversation right now with, with them about a couple, a couple of details, but we can share them. They usually, I've not seen them say explicitly like this is what you would do if you get, you know, snow above a certain amount, but they do imply, I mean, they say that this is like, say, you know, for example, you can have five pounds per square foot of additional load from the solar array. It does suggest that sort of if you were to exceed the snow, they're looking at current code, right? So current, current code, actually I think they just updated it in June. It, it has a number for snow on a flat roof because the presumption is again, it's just sitting there, it's not going to slide off the roof. So I think, yeah, the, the implication would be if you're doing it, if there's a calculate, this, this engineer that we hired for this job would not be sort of retained for the entire entirety of the 20 years. But if you, I think that would be the triggers if it says, someone mentioned a number before, if it's 20 pounds per square foot for snow load presumed and you have cumulative snowstorms that can be kind of estimated at 25 or even getting close to 20, right? Even if you're at 18 and it's like the next one might do it, then I think there would be a case, yeah, to, you know, have an engineer say, look, you gotta, you gotta shed some weight, at least in parts of the roof, right? Some parts are stronger than others, so.
Right. I just think that we as a district should be aware that if we have that perfect storm, that we had in 2015, that we know that we need to reach out to you guys and orchestrate that operation, shovel it out.
Yeah.
Because that could, that would be, that would be a bummer.
Yeah, I did talk with our team. We have an emergency, you know, number where you can call us if there's something that comes up after hours.
Yeah, but I'm thinking like proactively.
We would want to be.
I don't want to be calling your emergency line.
Correct, yeah.
Because if we're calling your emergency line, the snow is now in the building instead of on top of the building.
But they don't shovel it.
But they would come out and shovel it.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I don't, I don't know of any example where we've had to do that before, but if it were like, hey, you gotta get weight off the roof.
They need to protect their.
We could shovel, yeah, there's, there's space between the panel rows. It's not something we've had to do, but it could feasibly be done. And we would, I think, you know, again, look to, to remove it from pathways first, open areas first, and then if we had to go between rows. But we just want, we would want our team doing it so that there's no sort of, you know, damage done inadvertently, that kind of thing.
And one question I got, which I know you and I talked about during the subcommittee meeting, was that there was a resident who reached out and wanted to know because, like many of us who have residential solar panels, they're bolted into our roofs.
Yeah.
These are not bolted into the roof, these ballisters are on the roof, they're, they're held down by these block, this blocking system, they're not going to blow off, they're not perforating the roof in any way. So I was trying to explain that to her and figured you would be better to do that than a.
Sure. I will take the opportunity to kind of put some nuance to that. And we talked about this at the facilities subcommittee. So actually I think there is an image in, yeah, so if you have that slide that shows a solar, you know, racking system and then there's some equipment on the right side that is different. So essentially the stuff on the left where it's the rack, you can see that's an aluminum, you know, engineered rack that holds the panels up at five to 10 degree tilts depending on the final racking solution we select. Most of it is what we call ballasted. And ballisters are those, are those concrete blocks, they're not, you know, off the shelf kind of random cinder blocks, but they're very, you know, specifically engineered to last for 20-plus years and we don't have any issues with them. But the, the structural report is what's going to basically say, okay, there's a couple, there's a couple of constraints. So the, the code is going to say you need to have this much wind loading, what they call wind loading factored into your model. Wind loading has got in the new code, I think in January, in June, basically says that we're having stronger storms, right? So we have more, higher, higher wind speeds, gusts, and that, that means that solar systems or anything else on the roof for that matter has to be, there has to be more downforce to make sure it doesn't blow off the roof because that should never happen, right? That's the engineering kind of problem they're solving. So there's two ways to do downforce is the gravity, which is, you know, ballasted block and we try to do that wherever we can. The, the only constraint though is that structural engineer is going to say you might not be able to put as much ballast block as you would need in this area of the roof because it can only take five pounds per square foot. You, you know, if you were just doing ballast block, you might even need seven pounds per square foot in this area. So how do we make up the difference? It's going to be with a mechanical attachment. So that's what the thing on the right is, that's the typical design of it, but it's, again, it's not, it's not an improvised thing that's done sort of on the fly. It's all kind of designed and approved ahead of time with, again, the roofing manufacturer so that your warranty isn't affected. And it is, you know, highly waterproof. It has, it has a housing, there's going to be some anchors inside the housing, then they smother it with sealant and then they put that plastic cap with a gasket around it and tighten it down. So it's like nothing's getting in there. And I would say that we really have to do this on almost all flat roof buildings now. It's, it's very rare that we see like a flat roof building of any kind, especially a school because you're in the highest, insurance companies have these like risk categories and they, they really want, you know, schools not to be like overburdened with stuff on, on the roof beyond a certain point, more than they might for some other facility like a warehouse or something where they're a little more lenient because there's no kids inside. So it, it makes sense from a risk perspective that they do that, but it means that a lot of times we do end up with some attachments. So I think we're, you know, we're probably going to see a few attachments. They tend to be in kind of like the extremities of the array, right? Not in the middle of the roof as much. It depends on the roof. But again, this is kind of the fine engineering that goes on between the structural engineer, the ballast plan designer with the racking company, our team to an extent, but we kind of are just kind of officiating that. And then, and then your, your building inspector kind of having the final say on like, does this all check out? So that's, that's kind of how it's going to shake out is I do expect some attachments, but we don't know the final amount yet, but it won't, it won't impact your roof. And it's kind of the norm these days, so. But unlike, yeah, on a roof, on a, you're talking about like a residential home, usually asphalt shingle, it's every single attachment point is through the roof and those aren't supposed to leak either if they're done correctly. So, you know, you gotta trust your contractor and we, you know, no, we're the number one installer in Massachusetts. We just got the solar power award for that. We've done, and we do a lot of flat roofs. That's kind of our bread and butter. So we're, we're highly experienced with this arrangement, yeah.
Member Donovan?
If you could just review for us a potential timeline and any impact on learning and life going on within the buildings?
Sure. So timelines, you know, there's definitely a few variables, but I would say, you know, to be determined, but the city council is going to need to take a vote and then we'll execute agreements. What's already in play right now, what's happening is that, that structural kind of analysis is wrapping up, any redesigns are wrapping up. But once we get the actual, you know, contract signed, that's when we'll go into permitting, where we'll submit the permits to the city. The cost of that has already been factored into the PPA, the power purchase agreement rate, so that's not kind of an additional thing at all. Depending on, you know, most permitting offices, I'd say four to six weeks at the most typically for, for building permits. We've got electrical permits as well. And equipment wise, I mean, we're already procured on, we have stuff in warehouses ready to go. The, some of the, the AC gear, the alternating current electrical stuff may, you know, typically be special order, but that might be a couple of months out. So we'll be looking to schedule. a couple of months out. So we'll be looking to schedule something to, to install as soon as we know we've got teams available. We've got the equipment ready to go and we've got the permits. So it's really, permits is typically the thing that we're waiting on. I would say in terms of, yeah, we've definitely communicated a lot with, with the district, with Superintendent Quong about any concerns around disruption. But yeah, again, we do install on roofs in schools a lot. I think one thing we've mentioned is probably the, the thing, the day when there's the most sort of stuff moving around is typically the load, the load in day because we will use not a crane on these, but a extending arm to try to, to put all the equipment on the roof so that it can then be kind of shuffled around by people. So that, that part of loading the roof, really, you shouldn't hear much at all, but we're happy to do on a Saturday or on a vacation day. And it probably will be, you know, Saturday in the fall, hopefully late fall, I'm thinking is, you know, hopefully still a feasible timeline. So could be, you know, pre Thanksgiving or a little after, but we certainly really like finishing things, you know, mechanically before the end of the year for a lot of reasons. And, you know, that would be, once it's put together, there might be some electrical stuff going on with our electricians and the wiring, the final wiring. But we, you know, a lot of the, the equipment would already be on the roof. And then, once we're all wired up, we would apply for what's called permission to operate from the utility, which that can take a couple of months, depending on, you know, exactly how, how much work they have at the time. But yeah, I think a nice goal would be, you know, have these up and running, say, you know, by the end of the first quarter of, of '26, like March, could be sooner, you know, we'd love to see it sooner so you get savings earlier. But there's not that much sun in February and, and January compared to March. So March is a good, you know, a time to get up and running if you're going to catch the springtime production. So.
And as a follow-up, you're talking about scheduling. The big beautiful bill did change, and we talked about it briefly. I wonder if it did change a lot around clean energy, solar energy. Do we have to worry about any timelines or procurement? Or lose, will we be losing anything if we are not on top of this?
Yeah, I would say we're still waiting for that executive order that the president, he, you know, ordered, the order was on July 7th, which was three days after the bill actually got signed into law. And he said he wanted the Treasury Secretary to produce new regulations by 40, within 45 days, which would be August 21st. So we, you know, it could be, it could be next week sometime when we actually know what, what the new regulations are. I think that the Tenny and the CGS really are not going to, I can't guarantee anything, but they, they would not, under the current bill that was passed on, on the Fourth of July, they would not have, be impacted at all because it says that if, if a system can be placed in service and the, the switch has been flipped, energy's flowing, and by the end of 2027 calendar year, it is eligible for the current incentives that we've already projected out, the 30% tax credits that we, we get, that we can use to lower the rate. So that's a long runway, you know. We hope to place in service by, you know, again, March 2026 would be nice and plausible. So you've definitely got plenty of runway there. I think with the Timony, there's, you know, certainly a scenario there where if you, if you, say if you were replacing the roof in 2026 summer, then no problem, right? If you're replacing it in the summer of 2027, we would, we would be needing to carefully manage the clock there potentially because we'd want to start installation probably September 1st or something, you know, right, right as fast as we can once the roof is done to place it in service. There is another maneuver that, I don't want to drone on too long here, but there, what, what the executive order is probably going to change, or almost certainly will change, is how projects can be what they call safe harbor, which would mean, how do you lock in the current federal incentive for up to four years, which would take us out until like, you know, probably 2030. And we hope that's not necessary for the Timony, but I guess, you know, it's plausible. And that, the rules are on that right now. It's like we would just have to spend 5% of the value of the project on equipment, which we kind of already have in warehouse and we, we have a process for that. And they might change it so that it's more than that. It could be 50%. It could be you actually have to physically start construction, or it could be anywhere in between. So I think we'll have to wait and see exactly, you know, what, what we're up against with the Timony project. But I, I would say right now, you've got multiple different ways to get, get, get the incentive that we showed already with Timony. And, you know, that may change in the next week or so. But, you know, what we have been talking with some, you know, districts about if they're ready is, you know, executing agreements, PPAs, the definitive, you know, contracts before that new guidance comes out because it might become effective immediately. So, but we, I really didn't, you know, in the spirit of not rushing people towards, you know, making decisions like before they're really ready, we didn't really contemplate the city council doing that sort of before August 21st certainly. So I think, I think you're still going to have a lot of different ways to make the Timony project. Even without the tax credit, you're still going to, you would still save money. Obviously, you'd rather have the tax credit because you save a lot more money. But, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's some moving parts, but your first two projects are definitely, I think, in the clear, yeah.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the committee? If not, we'll take a roll call vote to move this conversation forward.
Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
No.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Wille?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Great, thank you.
Passes.
Onto the approval of minutes. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of June 26, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from the vice chair. Discussion. Member Maxwell?
I did let Martha know already, but I, I will just be voting present on the meeting minutes because I didn't get them in the printed packet that I received. So that's the only reason I'm voting present. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have the, excuse me, we'll have present vote from Member Maxwell. Yes. All right, those minutes are approved. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the policy subcommittee minutes of July 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, the second is from Member DiZoglio. Discussion. So discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll record Member Maxwell as present. We need a motion and a second to approve the policy subcommittee minutes of July 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, the second is from Member DiZoglio. Discussion. There's no discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Member Maxwell voting present. We need a motion and a second to approve the policy subcommittee minutes of July 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Member DiZoglio. Discussion. All right, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Member Maxwell voting present. We need a motion and a second to approve the policy subcommittee minutes of August 6, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Member DiZoglio. Discussion. So discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Member Maxwell present. And then we have a motion and a second needed for the approval of the facilities and building subcommittee minutes of July 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Member DiZoglio. Any discussion? There's no discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Member Maxwell is present. We'll move on now to staff reports. First up, we have the Health Task Force update. I'll allow, of course, the superintendent to share some additional information. However, I'll kick things off if that's okay, just with a quick update. So over the course of the summer, I've convened a meeting of the Health and Safety Task Force on an ongoing basis, including the lead custodian at the Timony, as well as representatives from the school committee here, the school administration, as well as the Director of Health, Human Services and Inspections, one of the health inspectors for the city, his name is Darren D., as well as DPW Director Pat Bauer. We've had representation as well from the Office of State Representative Ryan Hamilton. And the purpose of these meetings, of course, on an ongoing basis, as we began them late last year, early this year, is to really follow up on the ever-growing, continuous task list as it relates to projects involving measures regarding health and safety in our school buildings. And as a result of these meetings, we've had, as I've referenced, increased collaboration from various departments on the city side, namely Health, Human Services and Inspections, as well as DPW. One of the areas that I'd like to highlight is the continued discussion we're having regarding a prospective framework moving forward as it relates to facilities management with an assist from the city, namely in the context of external needs on school grounds, freeing up funding, of course, that would be used potentially for landscaping contractors and the like, but also freeing up the need for custodians to spend any degree of time outside of the schools and away from tasks that are directly related to keeping the schools clean. And so we've begun to have that level of increased collaboration. I think it's been a generally positive conversation, namely in the context of DPW and their assistance with the school facilities efforts, as well as the continued input and involvement of the health inspectors. They've been intimately involved with this group, but also with the process of ensuring that our buildings are ready ultimately in time for day one later in the month. And so that process is ongoing. We're going to be having another meeting this Thursday at 3 o'clock at City Hall. I forgot to mention as well, we also have as part of the committee, members of our, the teaching staff. We have a teacher from the Timony, the Tenny, as well as the Marsh, yes. And then we also have union representation by way of teachers from the CGS. So we do have a pretty wide array of participants taking part in these discussions and ongoing follow-ups. So I would say at this point, we continue to move in a positive direction. I think there are still areas where we need to, of course, follow through and maintain. But I am largely pleased with the progress thus far and will continue to keep the committee posted. With that, I'll invite the superintendent to share any other information.
Thank you. That was pretty comprehensive. So the memo that you have here is really a culmination of those meetings that Member Donovan, Member Shabelia and the mayor have been in, as well as Ian and myself and other staff members. And as the mayor said, other members of the community and the teachers' union, teachers in the buildings and et cetera. It's been a large group. I think for me, I know the past two meetings have been probably the most productive in the sense of we're actually, we all felt really good walking out of there, meaning everybody was in a place of, we all knew what we needed to do to move forward. I think it's been, there's, it's largely complicated. However, just the fact that this has pretty much been all that Ian and I have done all summer has helped us be able to focus on these plans and execute and follow through and, you know, communicate with city folks. Darren was going to join us tonight but was unable, and so I do hope that he is going to be able to join us at another meeting. The mayor and I will follow up on that. I think he has been exceptional working with us this summer in really trying to help us get the exterior of our buildings ready to go and pointing out things that just, you know, nobody here has an eye for what he is pointing out. And every time he comes, he does find some new things, new holes and things like that. So, you know, the, what I have in front of you are specific to buildings, which right now, right, the Tenny was in the forefront, so that's on the front page. The Timony also, there are specific items there. Again, for all buildings, actually, there are a level of specificity. I think the really productive part of our last few meetings was that we do have, I did finally meet Mark Jordan. I'm not quite sure what his title is.
Superintendent of Environmental Management.
Perfect. A wonderful gentleman who is helping us with the exterior and the tree cuttings of the Tenny and the Timony. They are almost done with the Tenny. The Timony has some work being done by a contractor right now for the trees in the courtyard, which those are incredibly problematic. They are, you know, dying. They have been leaning over the roofs. They're getting too close to windows, things like that. They are becoming bridges for critters. So we're having some support and helping to clean out the courtyards. And then his team will come in also to the Timony. Those are the two priority schools to get the exterior really cleaned well before the opening of school. And then the high school is our next, we have a priority list going, you know, and it is, we're all up against a challenge of the fact that, you know, he doesn't have a full crew every day either and is working with the city. So they're doing us a real, you know, collaborative service in favor here by getting some of these things done, which is, again, the Tenny looks exceptional already, but they have some additional work they want to do on the lower school side. So we're happy that that is progressing. Darren, we have scheduled monthly meetings, walkthroughs in all the buildings with Darren, who is giving his time to do that with us, so that we can have with the supervising principals, the senior custodian Ian and/or myself. I'm not, you know, we're trying to do this. I'm not sure we can both be there all the time, but I have put those in everybody's calendar for the remainder of the school year, all six buildings. This isn't just going to be two buildings. It'll be all six buildings to keep us on a regular schedule. So again, just the appreciation of the support. I think we probably have more steel wool in three of our buildings right now than I've ever seen in my life. But, you know, the buildings are old. There's just, there is, every time we go in and turn a corner, there's something else, right, that we see or a foundation or something of that nature. I think there was a pretty lengthy discussion. I wasn't there. The DPW Director and Darren, I'm not sure if Ian wasn't at this one, but really talking about sort of like just when the buildings were built, the Tenny in particular, right, some of the outside structures that just don't make sense to some of the issues we're having now 15, 20 years later, the way the water is, you know, coming off of drains and things like that. So there are some other things that other people have different eyes for that we just don't. And so I think that has been very helpful and productive. We did send out the staff letter to all the teachers. I think we shared that with you. That was a priority topic in one of our Health Task Force meetings. As we start getting these schedules and start getting these buildings in a place where we have exclusion measures in place, cleaning protocols in place, different crews, switching crews, different times, you know, we want to start the year to make sure that we're all doing our part, you know, so that we don't have some of those things that have been outlined in the Board of Health reports, plus the state reports. Again, those state reports were only in two buildings, but they apply to all of our schools, you know, for air quality, sanitation. This isn't just about pest management or cleanliness. There's other things that go into that too, to make sure that our kids are not exposed to other things. So that was pretty comprehensive. The union was involved. The teachers were involved in helping to redraft that letter. So that went out. All the buildings are open for opportunities for staff to come in if they would like. If they don't, they have the first three weeks of school to be able to do that. By contract, we do open the buildings two weeks prior to school opening. So we, we just have the opportunity to open it a little sooner. And knowing that we're not quite finished, right, this, that we're not quite finished with all of the classrooms, especially the Tenny, where we had summer programs just ending last week. So there are some classrooms that are being cleaned out now. So I, all the principals and secretaries are fielding phone calls and letting people come in and out as they need to. Gray ghosts all over the, the building so people can throw things out. So that's happening right now. I won't speak, the mayor mentioned some conversation about just sort of larger plans. I know Member Donovan and Member Mayor, I mean, Mayor Borghardt spoke of that at the Health Task Force meeting, meeting with folks in Andover. And then I also offered, you know, we're still in some conversation right now about a pest management company. Right now, we do have Pest End, so we're continuing to use Pest End, but we have some things in the work. I think the city is looking for some additional quotes to get somebody in with us. I know Darren had some suggestions. You know, it's just a matter of us making phone calls. That is going to cost us some money to do that. So we want to make sure we're not paying Pest End on a contract and inviting other people in and paying that. So that's a work in progress. Until then, we are still using Pest End as our company. And Member Wille specifically requested this, but I wanted to attach it for everybody. What Pest End has done at each of our locations. this, but I wanted to attach it for everybody, what PestEnd has done at each of our locations since December, I believe, is what we asked them to do. So we attached that here as well so you can see what they have added, what they gave us, what they were asked to do at those points. So I do think that we are in a much different place than we were three, four, five, six months ago. Again, we have some different protocols and processes in place that will be in place in all five schools, some different conversations we're having with senior custodians and principals and moving forward.
Before we entertain questions, I just want to add just a couple of additional updates on top of that. So just to set clear, defined expectations as it relates to some of these reforms that we are bringing about, I just want us to remain cognizant of the fact that over the course of the budget preparation process earlier this year, I know we had issues that we discussed at length in the context of the school district. But on the city side as well, I thought it was clear about this, but just to reiterate, on the city side of the ledger, I largely had to level fund virtually every department across the board, including DPW. So it's not as if they have an increase in personnel that they're using to help us with. So this is something that is a series of changes that will take time, additional investment, and I don't want to say that we're going to be where we want to be overnight or even in the next few months. It is going to be a longer process. However, one thought that I had was to designate as a point person Darren himself, who is, of course, as I've referenced, one of the health inspectors. I think it's fitting for somebody with his experience, not to mention his experience with going into our schools and conducting those inspections that previously brought a lot of these issues to light, you know, working with him on trying to point us in the right direction, I think, is smart. So we're doing that going forward. I also want to mention something, and this is a great point, that had been brought up in public participation. So as the superintendent referenced, as of late, the focus has been on trying to, in essence, draw back the vegetation around the buildings simply because, due to various issues as it relates to entryways for critters into the buildings. One of the most significant catalysts is the fact that we have these trees and the like right up against the building. And so that is an open invitation for critters to enter. And so a key part of this, as the superintendent referenced, is trying to cut those back and remove some entirely. Now, regarding the public participation comment, this is relative to the backflow issue. So this is something that Darren had identified in several previous inspections of the schools. And so I don't want to speak out of turn as it relates to where those projects stand at this point. Perhaps we can have a more comprehensive update on the backflow issue at the next meeting. But nevertheless, my commitment has been, obviously, we need to have all of these things permitted and relying on the plumbing inspectors and the like. And so we're going to be doing, however, something a little different. Typically, I know Mr. Gosman, in the past, you would go to the city with this need to, you know, get permitting taken care of. And then the schools would be charged for those permits. I think it's a little silly for the city to be charging the schools ultimately for that. So I'm waiving the fees for the permits. I like to see them get done, obviously, with every project, but it's something that I don't think the schools should have to pay for. So we can keep the public posted on that. But I just wanted to throw that out there and we can continue to discuss that in the future.
So if I can, can I update that?
Absolutely.
Because we did put it in here. So the Tenney and Timony have completely been installed by our plumber permits all. I think we even asked Darren if he wanted to come in and look, but he'll do that the next time he comes and walks through. High school, CGS, Marsh and Bran Street are work in progress. They've been ordered. They're not, they're pretty comprehensive items, large, complex. So hoses are disconnected basically until those valves come in. So that's what we are doing at this point. So there's no connected hoses to any unsafe spaces at this point. And we hope that all of those come in. We have the same plumber who we have contracted that will be installing all of those and has worked with the plumber from the city as well, to make sure those are doing accurate. I also have an update. I know I put on here, there's, one of the other conversations that we had was the need for new backboards in the cabinets in the classrooms. That is a, that is a little bit more widespread than just Tenney and Timony, but those are the two schools we're focusing on because that becomes a space where any mice or rodents can get into the classrooms. And so we're doing all this prevention if we don't close all of those. That has been incredibly time intensive for our staff to rebuild those backboards. It's not as easy as just putting some backboards there and stapling it in. Those cabinets, if you've ever looked or the next time you go into a classroom, that's always where the unit vent is. The cabinet goes from window to the end, so you have to actually remove the top. You know, it's a little bit more comprehensive than, than a simple fix in an hour. However, we were hoping that the DPW might be able to help us with that, but we do have a team of our staff who have continued to work on those backboards. So all of the backboards that were needing to be replaced are completely done at the Tenney at this time. And I have 13 rooms left at the Timony. So we have over 50 classrooms that have been completely done with full backboards and ceilings. So again, that is something that we feel good about getting into the opening days. We will have to continue that. You know, that, that is, again, I expect this all to be done to open, but now we're going to go to the Marsh and see what backboards need to be replaced there. The CGS, right, we're not having the internal pest issue with those two schools, but we don't want it either, right? So it'll be a work in progress, but it takes four to six hours for one of our maintenance employees to actually do one classroom. So again, it's just time intensive, but they've been working over hours and they've been trying to go through in the weekends when they're assigned buildings to do that. So we've made some good headway on that, and that is as of today. I had the two seniors update that for me tonight. I was going to give a sheet to Darren, but I'll email that to him so he has that update, something that he wanted to know.
Great. And then just a few last updates as well. I want to mention, I referenced how I level funded DPW. However, we have numerous additions to the city's fiscal year 26 capital improvement plan that are included in the context of expanding the capacity of DPW to take on some of these more facilities-related functions, including various types of landscaping equipment and the like that have been updated or, I guess, added to their inventory in several years. So we're making that change. But regarding the schools specifically, in the CIP this year, we are including funding to replace the fire alarm system at the Marsh, which is something that is a major concern. We want to get that taken care of before we have any issues. Speaking of the Marsh, we have funding for the boiler project that will commence. And then also, we're continuing to follow through with the commitment to include a carve-out in the CIP for the classroom carpet replacement project over the next several years. So that funding is in there, as well as a general carve-out for preventative maintenance. This is in the context of municipal property. That would certainly include the schools. And so this came up in our conversation with the town manager of Andover. In Andover, they carve out at this point $2 million annually in their CIP for preventative maintenance. And we have historically not had any specific carve-out for that. So we're beginning the process of taking the baby step of at least including $500,000 to begin with. And then going forward, as part of this partnership between the city and the schools relative to facilities, I want to build out a very specific framework going forward that outlines what the partnership looks like. There have been some things in practice that we've been trying out. And so we'll continue to monitor the results of that, but namely, help us to build that framework going forward. So with that, we can take some questions. Member Shabilia?
So first and foremost, I think it's worth noting that what we're doing as a team, the superintendent, the mayor, the school committee, the Board of Health, the Methuen Education Association, and parents, and all these people that we have at that conference room table on the second floor of City Hall, that's never happened before. This is not anything that has ever happened in, ever. I wanted to say in the 30-some odd year, but ever, right? Well, I'm looking at you because you've, you've been in the district. You know, I'm hoping, looking at you for validation. It's never happened. So this is, this is a step in the right direction. And we've all heard about, you know, the wall between city and school. And I want to commend the mayor and the superintendent and by proxy, some of us, for helping in what you guys are doing to work to overcome that and get through that. I think bringing in the DPW to help with the city, to help with the schools is a fantastic idea. And I have been very critical of the DPW in the past. But there's a lot that they can offer that the city can benefit from, not the schools, but the city overall, especially when the mayor has to sit down again in what feels like only a few minutes to do a budget again. It's, there's so much there. And then working with Darren and Heidi, who take a beating at the table down the street because they have a bad reputation for being tough in the community because it's literally their job to keep us alive so we don't get poisoned at a restaurant. They've been fantastic to work with. And I just first want to get that out there. The, the letter went out about the rugs. And I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I know that I got several sad, angry, pick your adjective, messages from teachers because the rug is the community of the classroom. And we, you know, you were in the room, we had these conversations. And even talking to my own children about it, like, that's where they go. They have their rug spot and they have their rug buddy and it's next to them on the rug. And like, I know that there was some discussion about alternatives.
Yes.
Has there been any progress with that?
Yes, done. So yes, we know that the rugs are going to be lost. And recognizing that, I think, you know, for me, I think Darren actually said it the best at the last task force, task force meeting is, we need to do this now because this is where we are.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean we're going to be in the same place a year or two from now and can relook at things when other systems are in place. But right now, the amount of money and time to expend on those rugs that I love dearly and everybody around me will confirm that, I just, I don't know how to do that right now, right? It, it's just not going to work for us to keep those rugs in the elementary. So Ian actually has already purchased our alternative for every single K4 classroom with a vendor who he knows, so he's helping us out. But it's going to be a similar, does everybody understand, like, know what a stadium seat is? The stadium seats that you, the square squishies?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Like a stadium seat, right? Like you would take it and sit on it, so it's soft. So it's going to look like that. They're going to be blue. They have a white M on it, so it's identifiable that it's ours. Everybody will get those in their classrooms. So we have 3,000 coming? Ian?
2,700.
2,700 coming that, that we are pretty sure will be here before school starts with no problems. And so, and believe it or not, the cost of those were far less than the cost of rugs in even half of one building. So again, we're getting a good deal. We think it's a good alternative. It's a comfortable seating arrangement, and we're offering it to all of the classrooms. So there is some place that the kids will have that they can actually sit comfortably on the floor. They're easy to wipe. We were told the material is not insoluble totally, which to get that, we'd have to pay even more money, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars. However, it's like the, like the reusable, like market basket bags is kind of what he described to us on the phone. So easily to clean and wipe, right? With, you know, it's easy to clean and wipe and they wouldn't remain on the floor. The point is that they're not, they would, they have a little handle. They would pick them up. The kids would put them in a box when they're not being used on the floor. The kids aren't on the floor all day, so it's when they are on the floor. So we do have an alternative. We think it's a good one. It was financially in our range of what we could do to make sure that we had that opportunity to our, for our classrooms and kids. And we, again, I think Darren said it right. I did add that to the letter, that this can be revisited. This isn't forever. But where we are right now, I mean, every, more so for the air quality, you know, they really honed in on the fact that the stuffed animals, the carpets, those are not good for our kids. So right now, we need to get, you know, some of those things removed. I mean, I can't tell you some of the classrooms that had, we have a lot of sort of the younger elementary with bins and baskets of squish mellows and pillows that kids are just using and reusing and retouching and retouching. And that's, we just, we can't have that, right? I don't think that, you know, we're not being very conscious about taking those home, teachers taking those home and washing them, right? We're not doing that all the time. So I think this for us, as we talked about at the health task force meeting, this is our reset, right? Let's reset, put everything in place to do the best we can for pest management, for sanitation, for cleanliness, for air quality, reset, right? There are definitely, then we'll know what those issues are, right? We need to remove those cabinets away from the air intake, which we found those were all over the place after COVID. Those were pushed up against. People don't realize what we're, where they're putting things, that it really matters to what's happening in the room. So again, this is a reset. And so the rugs aren't gone forever and eternity. I just think it's right now, this is what we have to do. And we'll be able to revisit it. I'm very confident we'll be able to revisit it in another year or two.
I think that's good news. I think people are looking forward to that. Transitioning quickly to the overflow and the comments that were made earlier. I know the mayor had hit on some of my points. If these things are supposed to be checked, I just want to make sure we're doing whatever it is we're supposed to do. Whatever it is we got to do to keep the plumbing inspector and Darren happy.
Uh huh.
Let's just make sure we're doing that. And then when Mr. Drew was speaking, he mentioned water testing, which got me thinking. And I know that there was a local establishment not too long ago that was flagged for its drinking water issues. Have we done drinking water testing in our fountains?
Yes, we're required to.
We are. When was the last time we did it? Is it a yearly thing?
The city has a schedule. They come around to all our buildings and take samples.
Okay.
So I'd have to ask the water department, but they, they, they come in and out of our buildings and do sampling all the time.
All right.
I'd say probably quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm sure if there was a problem, someone would have jumped up on the table?
Everyone would hear about it.
Fantastic. And then my last comment is on PestEnd. I know that we are in the process of looking. I think that we have been the mail train for PestEnd for far too long. They have done oodles and oodles of things, but it's all reactive. Nothing on here. We go back a few months to the, the hole in the side of the Timony that we closed up. That, that was, what were they, building a lake house? Like, it's, what are they doing? Whatever we need to do to get another vendor, I mean, I, I think that we've given these guys enough money. And we, I don't, I don't know if someone's going to be better, but this is ultra reactive. And we, we have to try something new because what they're doing is not working. And they just keep doing it over. This is literally the definition of insanity. So I would hope that we could, I know that you've got nothing else to do, Ian. So in your free time, I would love to see the, the pest RFP or the pest bid or whatever the process is that has to happen there.
I think we're getting, Mayor, did you, Mayor, did you say that procurement was looking for quotes, right, at this point? I think the cost of it is, we're looking for multiple quotes.
Oh, it's on the city side.
Yeah. So the, the issue that we have is that recently, we brought in a new vendor at the PD. They've been having some pretty crazy issues. And the new vendor's been outstanding at the PD. The issue is that they're not on the state bid list right now. So in Andover, there was a recommendation to look into a company called Walt and Pest. They use them in Andover and they're generally pleased. So we do have some options and there are some options on the bid list. So it's a matter of getting the specs together and proceeding with that.
I do.
We'll do more to share on Thursday.
And I think for us, it's having Darren involved. I think we've realized, right, that, that we're asking a group to do something and we're expecting things to be done. and we're expecting things to be done. You know, but his knowledge has definitely been really, just me, myself this summer, being able to be at all of these places with him and spend the time. His knowledge is really important. So any vendor that I'd have in, I'd kind of want him with them to walk around to see if they're worth, you know, any change for us. Um, and again, I think Darren has been just very willing and, and wanting to do those things with us right now, which has been very helpful.
Just don't tell them we are going to dinner.
Yeah, right, right. Well, no, I have to ask him before I go because I won't go if he says no. No, I just, I think that it's, again, that the tide has turned with like, we're executing now and we're finding these spots that are actually making a difference. And, you know, we're going to, I mean, he went with us to the timony and the tenny this summer with Ian and myself and the principals and the seniors. And, uh, was pretty amazed at the, the lack of, um, I shouldn't have said it that way, but the lack of rodent, you know, sightings, uh, that's happened in a short period of time. I mean, a little bit longer for the timony, obviously, but, I mean, and every time he walks into that building, we find another holes, you know, another crevice or a hole that could be fixed. But, um, what's that?
The mice are gonna create new waste, get into the building.
Right, right. You know, so I think all those measures, uh, we're, we're testing out some indoor, uh, new door sweeps for the inside to see if those will be helpful at all for us instead of those, you know, industrial ones for the exterior. So we have Doug and Rich trying some of those out. So I just, I think that has been, again, the most helpful right now. So progress indeed. But now we're working to like, okay, now that we have things a little more under control, now we can look at the fine details of let's get the exterior cleaned. Let's make sure that we have, you know, certain caulking on the outside filled, things like that, that I think we're, again, to starting to see those things happen with people all around us is incredibly helpful and productive.
All right, we'll go right around. Member Dezoglio?
So to, to start off with the Pest End, um, I, what member Chavilla said reactive, the reason for that is they have a book and there's, we're supposed to document which rooms have sightings of mice in those rooms. When the Pest End's people come in, they check the book, but I've been there several times. It's been empty. They've been empty. The last time I was at the tenny, it was completely empty. The custodian didn't even know what the book was used for. Okay, that's a fact. So, and also when they do fill out a report, they leave recommendations. I have a recommendation here from seven-three-twenty-twenty-five. They said, opening under the door, maintenance hall, loading dock. Please install door sweep and make sure the doors seal tightly. Which Ian, did we do that?
Yes.
Okay, that was a high customer, uh, responsibility. The date when it was issued was five-sixteen-twenty-twenty-three and it was reissued at seven-three-twenty-twenty-five. So that was recommended for two years, okay? To put the door sweep underneath that hull. Second was the lower school playground door, opening under door. Please install door sweep and make sure the doors sealed tightly. High customer priority. Did we do that? Did we end up doing that?
Can I explain something before you go through all of them? Because they don't take them off the list. And that's the fight I'm having with them now. That, one, you just read about the hallway door. I called them and I said, I told you to go to the tenny and put all the sweeps on. They said, we did. I said, well, you're, you got it on the report that says it wasn't done and it hasn't been done. So new reports, you're gonna see those starting to fall off. And they're starting to take them off, but they haven't. They've been just leaving stuff on there, which makes it look like it's not being addressed.
Which, by the way, if that's true, then.
And the calf, calf doors are all set.
Okay, because this one said six-eight-twenty-twenty-three and then reinstated five-one-twenty-twenty-five. So that's why I'm asking, these recommendations, and if they're not taking it off. Well, in these task force meetings, why isn't Pest End sending a representative to these task force meetings to have those discussions? I feel like if the task force is doing that, the Pest End company should also be in. I just feel like they're getting short sighted when I've looked at reports where recommendations for over the years, which for years, they were asking for those. And I think member Willett looked at the Pest End and things weren't getting done. Darren will actually seek to that. Okay, so to blame Pest End, and I also have another report that they requested exterior, um, 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 mice traps all around the building, but because of regulations, the facilities director rejected it, saying that he did not want to put it because then they would have to send notices out to parents. That's what I, I have an email, I'm happy to share it with people. What? Yeah, so, so at the end of the day, I just feel like Pest End's is getting the raw end of the stick here where it's easy to blame them when they have a process. And when I opened up the book where I saw mice droppings all over the place, there was nothing put in the book. So they're gonna open up the book, they don't see it, so they're gonna do the exterior. They're gonna do their basic, basic, um, because they can't go through every room in the building with two people. That's just, that's impossible. So by them having, knowing which rooms to go to, they could go right into the room. Which, which, can I ask the question? The document that we received about the new maintenance, uh, the new, uh, process that we're having for the tenny cleaning, there's nothing from Principal Hill or up. Is, who is responsible for those Pest End reports?
So, do you want to talk about your Google?
Which Pest End reports you're referring to? The book?
There's a sighting.
Okay, we, the book is obsolete. Throw the book out. Okay, um, there's an online form, all teachers, all staff members already have access to it. It's actually on the website underneath staff and faculty. It's called, um, Methuen Public Schools Pest Sighting. Okay, all you have to do is they answer three simple questions. What did you see? Did you see mouse poop? Did you see a mouse? Did you see something else? Where did you see it? And tell us exactly where it is so that we can make sure we clean it. That populates one large spreadsheet for the district, which I can, I share with whoever. Darren, I shared it with, um, the health department, um, so that they can see it in real time. And it also separates it out by school. So when Pest End shows up at a school, they've been instructed, the head custodians have been instructed to print out that spreadsheet for their school and hand it to the Pest End guy. So he has what they're seeing, where they're seeing it, they can address the areas. The timony did something very similar last year, worked really well. We've, we've adopted it across the district.
Perfect. So, and how has Pest End performed since we've had that doc? Well, nothing's happened yet because nobody's there.
I mean, we've only had it, I mean, the, the tenny's been the only one in session for the summer in the high school.
So the thing I'm looking at before we go out and put out to bid, I feel like you should keep the process because I've talked to a lot and I've talked to Adam, the owner of Pest End, and he is an amazing person. He's willing to work with us. He's always said that he's willing to work with us. So I feel like with this process in place, before we start going out to bid, I think we should give them a shot, uh, for, for following a better process. Because I just feel like with me and, uh, member Willett has looked at the Pest End's reports for years. They've been requesting us to do jobs and we just didn't do it. So that's, that's my, my main concern about that. Also, uh, because I haven't been able to ask, um, these questions, when it says here responsibilities, who, it says here, even under the current, um, facilities director, weekly walkthroughs to building with senior custodian, principal and facilities director. So is now Bruce Deller no longer the facilities director?
No, he is.
So on his thing, it's, it says, it says he walks with the facilities director walkthroughs in your oversight plan. That's why I was confused. That's, and that's, that to me is.
Think of that's a typo.
Okay, it, well, I just didn't, yeah, so.
It's listed him twice.
Okay, and so with that being said, why is he not in the task force meetings? He's the facilities director. He should be involved in the facilities.
He has come a few times.
He's invited to all of them. He does come when he's, when he's available. He does.
Isn't he supposed to, again, asking questions here. Community coordinating with rodent control measures. I know that's listed under Ian, but that's a facilities director's job. He should be coordinating with rodent and for the facilities. Also ensuring that any needed materials for repair are ordered. I feel like that's a facilities director's job. I feel like Ian's taking on the facilities director's job when he's not the facility.
Right now, he's overseeing all the maintenance. So he's overseeing those guys who are putting in the backboards, doing all that stuff. He's overseeing the, the hot water heater over at the CGS. Is this, this project's a nonstop. I'm trying to think, there's something just broke at the timony, um, something cooling.
The abatement and the carpeting.
Yeah, the abatement and the carpeting at the timony. He's, he's involved with that, the tiling. So he, he's focusing on getting the buildings as fixed as possible and getting those projects done so school can start. And I'm making phone calls when I need to call Pest End. I'm going on Amazon and ordering traps or whatever we need so that he's not sitting at his desk looking on Amazon for, for stuff.
Oh, there's a quick question. When custodian staff is also shorthanded? Because I know the week after we went in, uh, the new head custodian was the only person in the building at the tenny. I've asked several custodians, who's in charge when you need extra staffing to go to? And again, I, I've heard mixed messages. One says Ian, one says Bruce Deller, another person said to me, we don't have a process. So at the end of the day, what I'm very concerned, especially the week after we had that whole issue, there was one person at the tenny. And that guy was all by himself overwhelmed. What process, it doesn't even have, like, there's no process where they can call up as head custodians and say, hey, I need someone. And what guarantees are they getting staff that day? Who's in charge of calling other principals? Hey, can you send guys over? Who, who, what's the process of that when they're shorthanded?
Well, I can tell you, I've instructed all the senior custodians all year that if you're short a guy at night and you have somebody who's willing to stay an extra four hours for overtime to get as much done as they can of that section, do that. They've been doing that. They've been putting people in on overtime on Saturdays to come in and do sections that couldn't get done. So I, I instructed the seniors and they're doing that. They've also called back some of the people who have retired, uh, for four hours at a, at a whack. Come in, help clean the classrooms first thing in the morning or in the afternoon.
And what happens if they don't get them? Like what happens if nobody comes in and it's one person there?
Where would you like me to go get them?
I, I, I'm just asking the question, what is, because I don't want that senior custodian end up getting blamed for something, for being one man crew trying to clean this whole building. I'm, I'm just very concerned with the processes. Is there anything that person can do or, again, I don't, like, but that's what I'm saying. And also, why are they calling you? Like, why are you in charge of custodians now? Like, I just don't understand.
Right now, I'm overseeing finance and operations. So I work very closely with HR. She knows who's applied. She knows what positions are being filled. She knows who we can call in for substitutes if we need them. There's not a ton of people we can call in for substitutes. That's why we keep going back to the retired people. We know that they're, they've been, um, their background checks are already in payroll, et cetera.
Great. All right, thank you.
Member Maxwell, who'll go around the table?
So I have a few things and I'm sure it's not gonna be well received, but, um, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna start. So just to go off of Ryan, I mean, Bruce is the director of facilities. Back in August of 2022, there was a meeting where you asked for director of facilities and assistant director of facilities because Bruce was gonna be now the project manager so that he could be paid with S R three funds. I'm assuming that he went back to the director of facilities because we got rid of the assistant director of facilities. And as, as far as I'm concerned, um, I mean, he's the director of facilities. It's in his contract. His job description says what he's supposed to do. Ian's job description says what he's supposed to do. The, um, the fact that the senior custodians and some of the other regular custodian crews are taking the fall for facilities shortcomings is, is very saddening. Because I think that if they had the help they needed, then they wouldn't be at fault and, and let go or, or whatever.
That's on us.
Yeah, I know. And we're making jokes about it. So, um, not sure why the director of facilities isn't a part of the monthly walkthroughs. However, we've been having monthly walkthroughs for years. And I don't know why none of this has been seen by, you know, maintenance facilities, superintendent, whoever, I, I'm not sure what's going on. Back in August of 2022, Brandy, you, you did say that you've been, the people here in the maintenance and, and facilities department have been here for thirty years. So no, we don't need manuals because they all know how to do it. We don't have a system where people are checking in in the morning. We don't have a system where they're checking out at the end of the day. We don't have a system where there's a checklist saying, your job is to do A, B, C, D by the time you're supposed to leave. We have that, it's just not getting done. That's not a custodial problem, that's a managerial problem. And the custodians are taking the hit for it. So I think that we're, you know, blaming the people on the bottom when really it has a lot to do with the people on the top not doing their jobs. As far as the stadium seats, um, I had a stadium seat in my backyard for the longest time. It had a squirrel's nest in it. So when we're telling teachers that they can't have pillows and stuffed animals in their room, but we are buying thirty stadium seats for kids to sit in K through four, that's a little ridiculous. The backflow, the back, the backflow preventers, those have been backordered for what seems like a year and a half now. So I don't know how long that's gonna take, but, um, I don't know. The, the other thing, I mean, Dan, you had said something like, whatever the health department says, we should just do. It's not about the health department, it's about the schools, it's about the students. The airflow, we continuously talk about the airflow and how, um, you know, it's, it's bad in the schools. And it, open the windows. And I know it's gonna cost us more money because of the heating and the AC and all that. Open the windows, that's how you're gonna get good airflow. The letter that was sent out to staff, I don't know why there wasn't a stipend offered for them to come in because, I mean, I don't know about you, but I wouldn't just volunteer my time to come in and clean a room that should already be cleaned. The, back in August of 2022, it was, um, it, you know, Brandy had said, we know when we come to you in fiscal year twenty-five, there's going to be a complete restructuring of maintenance because we will be losing people. And how do we replace that? And what kind of things do we need to have in place at that time? It's 2025 and we still don't have a plan.
I presented it to you at the, um, the budget. I didn't get it. I mean, that's, you know, we presented that option to you, but financially.
We can work with Bruce over the next two years to see what the needs are in the districts for maintenance and facilities and management. It sounds to me like Bruce is nonexistent here. So, um, with the walkthroughs, the facilities, I've been on a walkthrough myself. I know that when rooms are checked off as completed, they actually weren't completed. It was disgusting walking through the tenny. We have, we have, we have items on this list that we're supposed to be replacing ceiling tiles. And I sit here and there's three ceiling tiles out of, you know, the high school media center. So I don't know, it's just, it's a lot. It's a lot to, you, we also talked about trees. I know there's a city ordinance, when you take out a tree, we have to replace them with two trees. Where is that coming in? I just, I just want to stop with the jokes and stop making, it, it's not funny that like our schools are in disarray. It's not funny that our schools are like in deplorable conditions. It's not funny and it's not the custodians' problem, if I'm being honest. There are four people that are cleaning buildings. I'm not surprised that they are, they get messy. I'm not, I'm not. The problems that we have now are the problems that we had three years ago and nothing has changed and no one's being held accountable except these poor custodians that break their backs trying to get work done just to be met with a bunch of administrative issues. So if we want to get on top of things, I think that we need to have a sign in and sign out. We need to have a checklist for maintenance. We need to. We need to hold managerial positions accountable. And, I mean, you've been on walkthroughs with T N T P for two years now. You didn't notice that the buildings were gross? You know, so, I don't know. If, if we're looking at pointing the finger, I'm not pointing the finger at Joe Schmo, the senior custodian at the tenney. I'm pointing the finger at the director of facilities. And if not him, then it's got to be your responsibility because it's your job to oversee everything. So, I don't know, that's where I stand. I had a few questions, I'm not sure if anybody wants to answer them, but I, I think this is definitely not a custodial issue and it's definitely an administrative issue. And we need to start having that conversation instead of having a conversation that's just all laughs and giggles and let's appease the board of health. It's not, I'm not, I'm not on board for that, so. And as they should.
That's why you.
I don't, I don't want to just appease them, I want to fix the issues.
Need to maintain order. Vice Chair.
During the budget cycle, we had allocated $150,000 to extraordinary maintenance. How much of that budget do we have left going into the school year? And how do we plan to maintain anything when I'm guessing there's nothing left?
If you give me two minutes, I'll look.
And the other question I have is with the stadium seats, when the, when they're not in use, do we, have we purchased some sort of airtight, mouse tight buckets to put them in? As opposed to, you said boxes, but I'm picturing cardboard box, not plastic.
Yeah, I think that's next on our to do list, the number of bins. I don't know what size they're actually going to be. I think we want to see what size so that each classroom can have stackable waterproof containers. That would be next on our list.
Okay, because I can just imagine having them piled somewhere and, well, it's going to be same problem.
Off the ground, yep.
Okay.
Good question.
It's not pulling up very easily. I will get it to you by the end of the meeting, though.
Thank you.
Member Willett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think the overriding document that was like a glaring red flag to me was the inspection report of June 26. And you had an outside inspector say repeatedly, where are the door sweeps that were recommended in the past? So there's your linkage, your pest end reports with June 26 inspection report from an outside entity for the Sadeem Methuen. Okay, that's your smoking gun. So there's a silo mentality that I think is finally, after two years, is starting to break down. And we're starting to have meetings and cooperation and an understanding that with the cooperation of the mayor, who's constantly in the schools with his team, that there's a cry for help, that we need a DPW in to assist us. And I have no problem saying that. And if we have to put the DPW in charge of the services of the schools, I don't have a problem approving that. Okay? I didn't, in the prior meeting, focus on certain schools versus, the, the tenney was the biggest glaring issue. The CGS had no major issues. The, the MASH in the, the one high school were making major improvements. And then you yourself said the timony had made major improvements. So the focus was on, on the tenney. So everybody woke up and marshaled all their resources to the, the tenney. And it might have been focused on one or two individuals. And everybody just glommed on those individuals and said, well, that wasn't my responsibility. You know, I could be the, the main principal or the associate principal, right? That's not my responsibility, that's somebody else's responsibility. And we operate under a silo mentality, the, the walls have to be broken down. Now, I'm not sure, I know it was talked about at the prior meeting. Have we inspected all of the schools at this stage? Like a reinspection, has that been accomplished?
Those are ongoing, the focus is on the tenney and the timony.
We will be furnished with those reports. Again, finally, after, after two years, we have something that's going to be posted, electronic reporting system. Now, are you included in that reporting system, Mr. Mayor? Because I would love to have those reports automatically go to your office, like a click it, fix it. Those reports should be going automatically to your domain. Because ultimately, you are going to be fielding the calls about the schools. You're the one that authorized DPW to come into our schools and, and clean up these messes. The DPW have done fantastic work. And there was also something in terms of the landscaping contract. I don't think we have a landscaping contract because we don't have the resources as a school system. So we have a landscaping contract, okay? So what happened with that if we had DPW doing the work outside? Or we had the custodians doing the work outside? What happened with that landscaping contract? Or it wasn't funded, but something transpired? So if we had a landscaping contract, who was responsible for that? And how much did that cost? Because I was told that we had a depletion of the landscaping account, that we could not have people do landscaping work. And at, at the last second, we had needed DPW to do all this exterior work. And they've done a fantastic job. The Herculean task, and again, the, the, the way that the timony was set up was absolutely asinine. It's like Willy Wonka and a chocolate factory. To have trees in a courtyard that was completely enclosed, to have a tree inside a building. And I know Member Maxwell and myself went to the, the timony, right? And they were doing like a triage as we were in the building. And you could smell the water intruding into the classrooms. Now, I can't blame at the moment in time the senior custodian because he was the one thrust into a situation to prop up a, a failing system. And that's why I think we have right now is a failing system. So if we acknowledge that and ask for as much outside help as possible, and I know Member Shabilia talked about years of neglect, okay? I think the mission of this school committee over the past two years is that we acknowledge the problems that have festered for years and we confront them, okay? We document them, we improve the system, we break down the silo mentality. We have a, a better ticket system. If someone reports something that they're not going to be vilified, we, we're working with the teachers and DPW and the mayor's office and the school committee that we have these reports furnished to us. But I don't, I'm not interested in having a, a fall person or, or fall guy in terms of a company. Because I reviewed those pest end reports. So I go back again to June 26, the inspection report, which clearly stated door sweeps were not installed as per prior recommendations. So when you have a government entity that fails in its responsibility and we're elected officials, we either clean up the mess or prepare for somebody else to, to come in. And I, I know I'm dedicated to that, I know the mayor's dedicated to that. With every fiber of my being, but at least acknowledge those prior pest end reports. Acknowledge that the system is failing and that we need to continue to have accountability and responsibility to the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Willett. Before we continue, I just want to state something for the record, just to clarify expectations. So right now, in terms of DPW's capacity, DPW, as we sit here, does not have the capacity to take on the custodial aspect inside of the buildings. That's something that we really need to focus on in terms of our custodians. What I'm thinking is that having DPW's help, especially from a ground standpoint outside the building, that will help to free up capacity for the custodians to remain indoors focusing on cleaning and not on the other ancillary projects, so to speak. I just wanted to state that for the record so we can clarify those expectations in terms of DPW. Member Donovan, do you have anything?
Nope, sorry.
Okay, so just three things. I think it would be really helpful to have Building Inspector Dee, if he does come, because he knows more about mice than any person I've ever met. And I think he'd be able to address some of the concerns. I look forward to his, I look forward to having him join us. He has a really good view of what's going on in the building. And I do hope, Mayor, that meeting with Andover was just so enlightening how they identified maintenance and DPW as two different entities. And how we could save money and, you know, build a relationship between municipal and city side. But I thought their approach was pretty sharp in terms of procurement, in terms of work orders. You know, I didn't know we had three electricians on the city side and none on the school side. So it's time. I, I think we're all in agreement there. But what I'm real, and I hope if there's anything I think we as a committee could do to facilitate that, I don't know anyone who would be, well, we certainly welcome the questions, but it would be the best way to proceed. And the custodial staff worked under the maintenance staff, but in Andover. But, you know, they are a different community. But what I'm really concerned about is looking forward when the schools open. And when basketball season starts and our gyms are in use, that's when we really talked about problems last year. Because the custodians are often pulled away to work with our visitors to the schools. Specifically, it's the tenney, the timony. But those are the big heavy hitters that are used so much by community groups. And the custodians will often be called to open the doors if there's an issue, if there's kids wandering the building. So I don't know what we can do to be proactive, to make sure we have enough bodies, that we have people available to empty trash at night instead of making sure the basketball teams have what they need. And it looks like Mr. Goslin.
Well, I would love to have a facility subcommittee meeting to discuss exactly that.
Okay.
Because we cannot continue to pull our custodians during the week to watch kids run up and down the hallway with basketballs. I don't know if we can rely on outside people to monitor our hallways for us or we have to come up with some kind of a in-between solution. But we need to come up with a solution for that. So I would love to meet with the subcommittee and maybe throw some stuff across against the wall and see what sticks.
Can I share a thought that just popped into mind? I haven't vetted this with anybody on the school side, but something to keep, I guess, at the forefront of our discussion. So at the city level, now granted, of course, folks would need to be quarried, et cetera. However, we have in the city a senior tax work off program. So if we do have any type of function that may require, say, not somebody with any type of technical expertise, but simply somebody there to help monitor, say, folks in the building, in cases like that, we do have a program where we could potentially put folks to work in that regard. Of course, there'd be multiple security considerations and quarry checks and the like. But something to keep in mind that we do have multiple avenues if we need extra help.
Mr. Goslin, do you know when gym season opens in our schools or after school out? Gym, you know, people using our, our gyms.
They want it ASAP.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Because that can be pretty intense with people banging on the door at four o'clock to come in. And the custodians are trying to, you know, empty the trash and do all that stuff we expect them to do. Okay, let's set up a meeting. Okay, thank you.
Important conversation, we can have a second round?
I do.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you pointed, but I never quite got there. I do want to echo and call out something Member Willett said. When they moved the new head custodian over to the timony, things started to turn around. To Member Maxwell's point, that is management. There was an administrative problem, a new manager came in, and now things are ticking up at the timony. I know that there were issues that we are not going to be aware of because we are not involved in staffing at the tenney. There were rumblings, there were conversations, it's rumor, but I know that there was a change in staffing there. I assume that there were issues. There are managers in those buildings. Those managers are responsible for their team. I go to work tomorrow, I am responsible for my team. I have a boss and my boss has a boss. My boss's boss is not going to get yelled at if I screw up or my team screws up. I'm going to get yelled at because I am the frontline manager. But then they come to me and I get fired. Which is what happened. Somebody at the tenney is no longer there. They, there is these changes. We've learned tonight that some of these pest end invoices may be inaccurate, which is a completely different problem. I assume we have to sign off on these invoices when they come in?
There's no sign off, I don't have to approve or not approve. I mean, we, we get them electronically, they are now mailed to the, which they were not before. They were, they're now emailed to the principal, the head custodian, myself, Mr. Stella.
If they're not correct, we should be rejecting them. If, if, go ahead.
I don't disagree, it's just I.
I know it's not you, but that should be the direction in the building.
Yes.
To, to Member DeZoglio's point, if in 2023, it said do door sweeps and you said, hey, guys, do door sweeps, and we paid them to do door sweeps, and they did door sweeps, take it off the damn invoice. And if they didn't, deny the next invoice.
I will say, when I do see things come in, like those specific things, I pick up the phone right there and I call and say, hey, I know last Saturday I paid you to come do door sweeps and now you're telling me I need door sweeps. He goes, oh, that's just left on. I'm like.
Then deny the invoice.
Well, your tech guy is, has to take it off.
Right. The quickest way to make a vendor comply is to not pay them. And I, I, I know because I've, I've done it, especially when there's an error on an invoice, and that is an error on an invoice. And then I guess my next question to you is, when was the last time you were on the roof with your head in a condenser of whatever it is called up there? I'm going somewhere with this, play, play along.
When was the last time I was on the roof?
When was the last time you were on the roof or in, or in a, at a boiler room welding something or?
Well, I was in the boiler room Thursday at the MASH.
Were you welding?
I wasn't welding. I was on the roof at the MASH, was it in the winter with the mayor?
Yes, we were on the roof together.
Heard about that, DJ's not allowed on roofs anymore.
No more roofs.
How many managers, and maybe Member Donovan and the mayor can chime in, when they met with the DPW and the town administrator in Andover? Do they have someone who oversees their, their custodial staff? Because Bruce is not a manager. He may be entitled, but he is doing the work. That's cool. Our job description says we are legislators, but you and others consistently cross that border into wanting to be executives. So who cares what job descriptions say? We don't get to choose which ones we want.
One person at a time.
That's the thing, like, if, if we want to say we want to hold someone responsible, then we need to pull Bruce off of jobs and he needs to be a manager. We can't expect him to be the guy who swoops in to rewire this furnace or to weld this boiler or to Frankenstein this water heater because we don't have any money and we need to MacGyver our things back together because Methuen's held together by duct tape and prayers, and then get mad because he's not managing the, the, the folks at the timony. We either need to pull him off or acknowledge that he's out there doing because we can't get our stuff together from an economic development issue and a cash flow issue to hire appropriately. That's where we're at. So I know everyone wants to find a scapegoat and Bruce is the devil and Dr. Quong's the devil and DJ's the devil. Everyone's the devil, everyone's guilty and everyone's to blame. But no one has stepped back and said, where have we been for the last 10 years? Member DeZoglio loves to tell us how he's been on the school committee for almost six years now, and that's great. You've done a lot of wonderful, I'm using you as an example, hold on a second. All these great things, but like, we've, we've consistently said, and I've consistently heard it a bunch of times, it's short and it's going to continue to be short. And you've heard that every single year. And you've heard that every single year. We can't blame someone because they're running around trying to save us because we can't get out of our own damn ways. We need to decide as a body and as an administration, do we need Bruce on a roof in a boiler room? Or do we need Bruce managing the department? And if, whatever that decision be, it is. And then the issue falls to Ian to rub his pennies together? And then we have to go to the mayor and the city council and, and beg and plead. Because you can't continue to burn the candle at both ends, it's not realistic. And basic third grade math tells you there is only so much time in a day. So if we want to continue to burn anybody out, then we need to either hire more people or we need to reallocate our resources. That's it.
All right, just keep in mind this is.
So, so two things, well, three things. First, I'm actually going to defend the administration for a second. Because we real, even though the pest end reports go back about three years. Well, the, the health inspector, before Darren and Heidi, I have reports where literally six months prior to Heidi and, and Darren going into the schools, the former health inspector gave us a facilities report that says, facility, great. Good. Okay, what? Yeah, just, just trying to check and defend. So, and at the same time, prior to this, even up to about a year ago, Dr. Quong never received a health inspection report. Correct? Dr. Quong, like you never received a health inspection?
Normally receives.
So when Darren and Heidi finally hit us with the first violations, it was only given to one person, both two. And I'm not going to say it, but Dr. Quong wasn't one of them. So how could also Dr. Quong do anything when she wasn't even receiving the health inspection reports? And then I have a whole list of emails where the health inspections were saying, we need a plan, we need a plan, we need a plan. But guess who was never on that email? It was Dr. Quong. There was only a few people that were on that email. All right, and it's all public record. So it got to the point where there was one email like in May where they finally tagged you and said, we need a master plan, we've been asking for a master plan. And there was no master plan given. All right, and then they finally gave a master plan, things were getting done. But what happened was when the door sweeps and everything was put in, they ate through the door sweeps. And what ended up happening was when September of last year came along, September 16th, which we were hit with, with the mayor's passing away. It was within five days after this inspection where we got hit with so many violations there. Which led to this whole thing erupting. So I will defend, even though, but again, nope, even Dr. Quong wasn't even receiving the pest end reports. And, and I don't want to throw Member Donovan under the bus, but no, 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 quick question. Did you, when you were at the time, did you ever like got the like pest end reports as a principal? So. Yeah.
Not to my recollection, usually I would meet with the pest end.
Yeah, so at the end of the day, the pestons were left with the head custodian and et cetera. Like whatever, so that was another problem. Even when you look at those situations, when you have health inspectors giving you good reviews and then literally five months later, getting hit with violations. But then nobody's paying attention to the pest end reports at the same time because the member will, will agree. Even though the health inspection reports were coming back good, the pest end reports were coming back terrible. And that's where I look at things where it was left with two, three people. And that's where I look at things and I, and I get what Member Shabili is saying. Utilizing resources, I, I get it. But when you take on the responsibilities and you say you can do it, which Member Shabili, when I'm a teacher and I take on three, four different projects, I, I look at my principal, if I can't do it, I go and tell them, I say, I can't do it. All right, it's sometimes you gotta, you have to admit, hey, I'm overwhelmed, I need help. But then, you know what? Then that's on, that's on the higher ups now. Because if someone's asking for help and the higher management's not doing it. But again, but when nobody's coming to us, because I only see two, three here. No, I don't, if I'm a teacher, if I need help, I go right to my principal, I go to right to my supervisor. That is no excuses, you should be coming to your body and saying, I need help, help me. All right, so that's, that's, that's all I want to say. But also, quick, one more question. When it comes to the permits, so we, were we getting charged?
In the past, yes.
Okay.
Well, they would charge the vendor, but when the vendor invoiced us, they would include that as part of their bill.
Okay, because I talked to Joe, the plumber, and he let me know that he had to pay for permits.
And I, we have had this conversation before and I, I thought it had been fixed, but I think there was a little miscommunication somewhere. And I think they apply for it online, which makes it even more difficult to get it waived. So I don't exactly know the process they're using now, but I, I trust that the mayor has it taken care of.
And are we going to get reimbursed for those permits that we paid for?
I'd have to look into that and confirm, but anything that I get by way of a waiver request regarding anything relative to the school permits, I, I grant that.
Okay, thank you.
Member Maxwell?
So it was said, I don't remember who said it, but it was said that the, you know, the Timmy had gotten a new senior custodian and, and they did, and he's great, but you know, the senior custodian that was there previously, it was not that he was let go. He is just a district physician now. The fifth grade at the Timony, I did, I did want to ask about this. They had to completely pack up their rooms for the rug removal, and I know that those rooms aren't done yet. My concern is that the asbestos is airborne and it doesn't, it's, it doesn't become non-airborne until it's in undisturbed air. So when are those rugs going to be pulled up?
Those rugs have been pulled out of all the rooms that have to be abated. The abatement's done, the abatement company is out of there. Those rooms were like clean rooms, I don't know if you've ever seen an abatement done. It was kind of freaky with all the plastic and they seal off everything. They did a really good job. They're out of there, the tiling company now is in there doing the tiles, they'll be done for the beginning of school.
So when do the teachers get back to sit in their rooms?
What's that?
When do the teachers get back to set up their rooms that they had to completely?
I believe they're already starting to move furniture back into some of the rooms. I don't know which rooms are fifth grade, I don't know if fifth grade rooms were ones that had to be abated or not.
They did, yeah.
They're downstairs.
They did have to be abated.
It's the downstairs, so those are a little longer.
So they're, they're working on tile on those now. They're working as fast as they can.
Yeah, I bet. That glue is not nice to smell.
The company that's doing the abatement is required by law, I think, actually, I shouldn't say by law, but they're the ones who are actually doing the air quality, they can't leave the room until they're done. Yeah, and then the tile people, different people are coming in to tile when the room is cleared.
I just want to make sure that the fifth grade teachers have the same, um.
Time.
Time to set up their room before their kids get there.
I mean, they may not, I mean, and just again, we're doing everything we can to try to make sure that they can, but this is, we need to get this part done. So we'll do everything we can to make sure that we put everything, everything right now and all of the abated rooms is in the big gym.
But they're done, the abatement is done.
The abatement is done, it's the tiling right now. So I think those, the classrooms upstairs, I think is what Ian was referring to, are all done. So those, the furniture is probably being moved back in and they'll be fine. It's the downstairs, which is where the fifth grade is. That is just probably going to be another week or so before they can actually go back in.
Vice Chair.
So I feel like a lot of the responsibility is on the fact that we are not funding our maintenance. We are not funding our janitorial staff, we're not funding it. I mean, Dr. Quong came to us with a plan for restructuring the entire thing, and we couldn't fund it and we voted no to it. So, you know, there's, there's no money to do this. And yes, we want to save teachers, which we did our, the best we could, and we still had to cut teachers. But the reality of it is, is that we don't have the money to do the facilities. We don't have the money to have the managers be a position by itself like it should be. We don't have the staff, we are running our staff ragged, they're, they're spread so thin. We don't pay them anywhere near what surrounding communities pay. People are leaving in droves to go to Lowell because they pay more. So this is all, it comes down to a budget issue and we don't have the money. And so we can sit here and criticize all of these people who are working their butts off for next to nothing and doing everything they can, and these people are so committed to our community. And we can sit here and destroy them and have them leave too. You know, or we can take the blame for the fact that we don't have fully funded schools and we, we don't have the money to do it. So we have to accept the fact that the schools aren't going to be perfect. We have to accept the fact that the facilities aren't going to be clean all the time. We have to accept the fact that we have large buildings and large buildings have mice. That's just a reality. And so is it, do we want to mitigate the fact that we have mice? Yes, of course we do. But the reality of it is, they're large buildings, there's going to be mice. So, you know, it's great that we can try to, you know, make Bruce the fall guy, but the reality of it is, is we're not funding the positions. And we're not funding the buildings, and we haven't been. And she tried to restructure this year, just like she said she was going to do, and we said no. And so it's on us, it's not on her.
Any other discussion?
Just very quickly, I know for a fact reports collected dust and weren't dispersed to the right individuals. That has nothing to do with manpower, that's, that's a silo mentality, and we have to eradicate that. So to justify what we're doing in the schools over the last two years because of a manpower issue, that's inexcusable. Now, we've made significant improvements, and I applaud the mayor for involving DPW. And he did clarify, and I was already on board, is that the exterior landscaping needed to be tackled. The exterior trees and foliage and some of the interior items needed to be tackled. I think the outreach, maybe to the vocational school and doing some of the, the work and approaching Lowe's and Home Depot for donation of supplies, that's something that we should broach. I think that was something that the Health Task Force, and I know Member DeZarglio and I talked about that in the past. I think, again, acknowledge the issues, work on a plan. Make sure as many people are notified as possible, and don't let the reports collect dust going down the line. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move on. Superintendent, I'll invite you to start the discussion regarding the grammar school scheduling update.
Thank you, so in your packet, there's a memo, this is a request of Member Maxwell. But some other folks had asked about scheduling and how are we doing after the budget and losing positions and what were we working on? So I asked Dr. Golovski to present a memo on some details of fact. I would tell you that right now, these are still being inputted in Infinite Campus because of the late start in actually creating the budget with a final number of staff. The APs got a late start on this. So I do have a letter going out to families. Last year, it went out last week, this year, it's going to go out this week. Because I just needed a better handle on when the portal is going to open for, um, for our student schedules. And so that will be going out to families, if not tomorrow, definitely by Wednesday afternoon. So that everybody knows when those schedules will be out and information. So without, I, I, without further ado, I'll just give it over to Dr. Golovski to go through. This is very detailed, so if there are questions about it, I think a lot of what is here has always been in the forefront of making sure that students at all four schools receive access and similar, um, in schedules as best we can so that one school is not getting more science than the next school. That has never been our intent. So there are minutes to time on learning that Dr. Golovski has put together with explanation of why we have certain times for certain courses, which hopefully will make sense to all of you. The specialist was probably the most challenging, that's where you're going to see some of the most nuanced schedules as they come out for students because of the different staffing and specials at the Marsh and CGS versus Tenny, Timony. What we lost and how we had to sort of re, um, you know, align the specialist schedule during the day. So that's all in here, Dr. Golovski.
Sure, thank you. So the, the question initially was about the process and how schedules are made. So I, I'll just go over that briefly. It's also highlighted in your memo. So we, we had a convening with the associate principals, supervising principals, Dr. Quong and myself. And, and I gave the associate principals scheduling guidelines that were based on the recommended time allocations for different lessons and subject areas to be executed. And so that is shown on the screen here. The outline of, of which program would need which number of minutes in which grade. And then also calculating the minutes for the wind block, lunch, snack, specialist periods. And a lot of this is contractual in terms of the recess time, which I'll get to later. So I did tell associate principals, because they have different variables within their buildings, whether it be number of cafeterias or recess spaces, related service providers, service delivery, reading specialists. Even, even the teaming structures within grades, whether they're operating with a two, three, four, five person team, will change how the schedule rotates. I told the associate principals that they had the flexibility to arrange those blocks in areas or patterns that they saw fit to make sure that all students were able to receive their services. So long as these guidelines were met within the span of a couple of minutes or so. And you'll see on the memo that I gave to you with the detailed information, the bolden numbers point to the range of minutes that each student across the district will spend in that subject area. So you'll see there's a, a range of a couple of minutes here or there. And that's based on the flexibility that was needed, depended on, on different school buildings. Throughout the year, last year, associate principals came to me with recommendations or suggestions that teachers were bringing to them, things that they didn't particularly like about the arrangement of their schedule. And so they certainly considered those elements to the extent possible in terms of arranging the order of classes. That being said, due to the time constraint of many of these programs and lessons, there's only so much arranging that can be done. And I will tell you, the associate principals and the building administrative teams spent hours puzzling and designing and redesigning to ultimately come out with what they feel will be the best schedule for students. So I thank them for that work there. Just a couple highlights here. You'll notice that in kindergarten, there is a 35 minute snack period in the morning now, that's contractual. So there's the 20 minute recess that's hooked on to that 15 minute snack in the morning. Also additional 20 minute recess abutting lunch. And that's been past practice, but is now memorialized in the teacher contract. So you'll see that there. You'll notice now that all students have access to art classes. That hadn't been the case for students who had been selecting band or chorus in years prior. So now everyone has access to art. And then the second page of this memo talks about the specialist rotations. And I'll say, this is the place where we got most creative. We tried rotations from four days to eight days to 10 days and really tried to, to figure out what was best for students. and really tried to, to figure out what was best for students while being mindful of the number of class meetings so that they're able to accomplish what teachers hope to accomplish and what the curriculum is generally mapped for, while also giving students ample opportunity to make choices and try what they're interested in, particularly in the areas of music. Upper school is particularly complicated. That's the, the segment of time where students are able to choose band or chorus or general music. And that leads to some complications in the rotations. And I did want to describe too, you'll see the, the row called flex where there's, there's some instances where general music students have flex days. And those will be additional class meeting times spent in art, PE or health. So for instance, that will be pre-scheduled and not a surprise to any teacher. The decision will be made in consultation with the associate principal where perhaps their flex days for trimester one will be spent in one subject area and then a different subject area on trimester two. In one school building, some specialist teachers and, and associate principals have talked about the opportunity for interdisciplinary projects and have been excited about that in the flex days. And so those flex days are just what they are, but will be pre-planned as well. And I think that's generally the overview of how students will be spending their days.
So before we take questions, we need a motion in a second to extend past nine o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from the vice chair, second from Member Shabili. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have, we're going past nine. Questions about report. Member Maxwell?
So when I had first originally requested this be on the agenda, I really was talking about the, the daily schedule and not so much the district's schedule, which is, I mean, this is great. This is great to see and, and be able to put our eyes on. But I, I really had more, more focused questions like, I know you said you had spoken to like the APs last year and you guys couldn't accommodate the schedule last year, which makes sense. It was last minute, so it couldn't be done. But this year, it was supposed to be looked into. And when it comes to like kids being dropped off late, marked tardy, they're going straight to specials, so they don't necessarily get to eat as if they would if they were on time. No morning meeting, so there's no time to check in with students. There's not like, you know, that's not a good way for them to start their day. Teachers on morning duty, they're not back into their rooms on time. There's no travel time. There's also lunch and recess and with a recess, I guess teachers have to pick up their students from lunch and recess. So their lunch is actually cut short because they have to pick up their students. Reading and writing, somehow there's four hours of that. Combining social studies and science, I don't know if we went, if we got away from that this year. It looks like we did. And then the, the trails curriculum, that's taught by homeroom teachers. And then I, I wanted to touch on just lunch because I think that 20 minutes of eating and 20 minutes of recess is just not enough time for kids to actually sit down and eat or play with their friends. There was one other thing I wanted to ask about though. Oh, like for instance, last year, I knew that my, my daughter was in eighth grade and their lunch was the very last lunch of the day when they're the first ones in the building. You know, so they're waiting until, I don't know, 1:30 to eat and it's, that's a long day with no stack. Upper school doesn't get snacks. So has any of that been reconfigured and thought about? And do they get snack? I mean, it's a really long day to go without snack. I know they are 12, 13. They should be able to like control it, but they're hungry.
You know, the, the upper school students don't have snack. They do have the, the breakfast offering.
Yeah.
But I will say lunchtimes proved to be tricky for us for a lot of the reasons you talked about. Making sure we have enough teachers on duty, making sure everyone has ample lunchtime, coverage. And so we went back and forth in several different arrangements. Schools were really good about sharing ideas about what they're doing for coverage. Some of the, the, the aspects you talked about came up in our meeting. Some schools talked about the tardiness being an issue and especially if they're going to a specialist class, the transition of getting the student there. But also if there's a core academic course starting the day, the student missing instruction. Or if you're starting with when, the student missing potentially their service. So it, it's a rock and a hard place on that one.
Do they have more time in the morning where they could have like a meeting, like a, like a meeting, a morning check-in almost? If you will, like an extra 15 minutes?
So can I just comment for a second? So I just, I want to be careful a little bit here because this conversation is so going to get into the weeds of what we do with our teams because we have exactly six hours a day, so much time for lunch, time that has to be on academics, like everything that you brought up is everything that our team looks at in great detail to try to do the best that we can to make sure that it fits the required contractual obligations for teachers and lunch and who's going to supervise kids at recess because having an hour of lunch and recess sounds great, except who's going to do that and where are all the kids going to go when I have nine grade levels that have to eat lunch and have recess, right? So all those things are critical and I'm happy that you brought those up. I, I just also want to say that, that wasn't the request you asked us for. It was very specific to how we came up with it. That's why we provided this tonight. So if there's other things that maybe you want to have a conversation with us about that would answer some of those questions, maybe that makes more sense. I just think this, we're going to get into the weeds of administrative stuff with like passing time and lunchtime and who picks up their kids. I'm just not sure that's appropriate for this conversation. I, I don't want to stop it, but I just, I think there's a lot of details that probably Lisa, Yandor, myself can sit with you and kind of talk through so you see the complexity of it differently than not here when we have a really long agenda too.
Yeah, I think my only point in bringing it up was just that it's been a year and I wanted to make sure that these issues were addressed and managed. You know what I mean? That, that was my only point in bringing it up.
Dr. Golovski brought it up. I mean, we met for two and a half hours maybe in my office when we had staffing, when we had all the APs and principals like in the district not on vacation that day and just said, here are, like where is everybody in there thinking, right? We did a sort of a check-in with everybody based on the staff that you have. Grade level teachers matter when you're talking about specials and when you're talking about lunches, right? So it's like every nuance is a little different in every school. And then what are our non-negotiables, which, I mean, I went back in my drive. Every, every year, we have non-negotiables of how many minutes we want in each subject area, how many minutes we want for lunch and recess, right? What are our non-negotiables so that a fifth grader at the Timoney is getting the same academic time, the same lunchtimes time-wise, right? Like in that six-hour day that the kid at the Marsh and the CGS are getting, right? So there's just, there's so many variables that play into schedules. We'd be happy, I've been doing it for 24 years in this district and be happy to sit down and just talk through some. But some of those things were absolutely discussed with the APs in that meeting that you brought up on your list. Some fixable, some not, right? So like some things are going to be better than others. There always has to be a grade level that has specials first block, so we're never going to fix that entirely. There's just, there's those things with nine grade levels. And again, how do we make sure that each block of time is filled? So some nuances that are tough.
We'll move on now to the staffing update.
Sure. So I added, this is a list that is being shared right now with HR, myself, some other district leaders. So I actually think this has changed for the better since I put this in there on Thursday. But as you can see, and the parentheses next to the program assistance is the number of them. So if I added them individually, this would be a longer memo. So we still have quite a few sub-separate openings for program assistants at the Marsh and the preschool in the early. Yep.
That says 504. Right, well, she just said that's the number of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know the 504 is because the reason they have the one-to-one. So like the 11, I'm sorry, the other ones that say, it's a one-to-one, so that one doesn't count. But the, like lower school pathway sub-separate, that says 11 and then two and then a six and then a three and then a five. And then on the other side that has 11. So the foundation sub-separate, those are my sub-separate classrooms that, you know, we saw the same pattern last year. Believe it or not, we're in a better place, but as I shared with all of you, right? A contract, a good contract doesn't fix the problem that I don't have enough people in the world who wants these jobs. So that's, you know, we're working through some of that. Colleen, Gina and I are going to be meeting later this week to make some final decisions. I do think one of the things that we're going to have to do and Colleen and Ian are going to work on this as well, is the money that we have budgeted for these positions exactly in the budget. At some point here to open the year, we have to, we have to pool that money and say what is the priority. The one-to-ones for us are probably going to be the priority, right? Positions, how do we fill those? And, and ask contracted service providers to fill those, except we have a, I mean, we had a finite amount of money last year, but even more so finite this year, right? So what does that look like to be able to provide the services, combine different staff or programs? So we're going to be doing that, you know, beginning at the end of this week and next week because we have to make those final decisions before we open school for staff. So we're still, you know, we're still interviewing. We're still looking for staff. We're coming up with creative ways, but that's, that's going to be the next step for us for staffing.
Questions?
I don't know if there's questions about.
Member Maxwell?
I'm sorry, I just have one question.
Of course.
And I know you've explained it to me before, so just bear with me. But the two school psychologists, I know it says districts next to one at the Marsh. So will they just be housed at the Marsh?
Yeah, so typically we have a homeschool for some, for folks who are district-wide.
Okay.
So they know where they're getting, you know, like their mail, their paychecks, all that stuff. Go to one school and they have an office typically in that school. But the district-wide one is going to spend more time potentially in one building than the other, but they're going to have to go to the other schools to test. That one's been open since last year. We never did fill that even last year. So for the psychologist, there, we have folks who helped us last year because we were in the same position. And all four of those folks that helped us last year, outside consultants, not necessarily contracted service, but independent consultants as well, are all willing to help us again. So we're, we're happy Gina did report that to us, that all four have said we'll, we'll stay on and help for next year. Right, we, we would like to hire them full-time, but they all have some different things going on in their lives. So we're, again, we'll be sort of pulling ourselves together and making some decisions about how we're going to support. And again, most of this is related service and special education. So we keep taking it down. We do all the tricks. We keep taking it down, putting it back up, reposting it so it pops up in people's school springs. You know, we've, we've contacted, I'm in contact directly myself with UMass Lowell, some folks at Merrimack, Riviere. I mean, we're trying to contact kind of everybody to see what we have available around us. So still a work in progress.
Any other questions? Member Donovan?
So the PA openings are a little bit worrisome. Do we, are our BBEs in place? I mean, not that we have enough BBEs, but so they'll probably slip into some of those.
We're hoping that won't be the case, but it could be to get us open, yes.
Okay. And you did mention some of these positions look.
Because we have less BBEs, remember?
Yeah, I know.
We cut our BBEs. So we have less BBEs than, than in previous years. So we will likely not be able to pull as many to fill in these spots. So again, we're going to look at the, the money that we have budgeted for these positions that have been approved in the operating budget. What's the cumulative amount? Look at the priorities. That's what's on the docket next for Colleen and Gina and I to sit down.
Okay. And some of these positions, as you noted, they, there seem to be a few that were open for last year.
Yep.
Okay. So the school psychs in particular.
School psychs, we're just not getting any applicants at all and.
Is there any way, I, I, we may have discussed this and forgive me if I brought it up before. Is there any way we just use those consultants and, and stop looking for school psychs? You know, because it just seems like we're chasing our tail with them.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, this is year two of having multiple openings that we just aren't get. It's not even that we have applicants and they're not certified. I mean, we just don't have applicants. Nobody's even applying for these jobs. So, so yeah, I mean, I think we're going to have to restructure a lot of things. If we're going into year two and we have a decent contract for both, again, it's not the contract that's going to find the actual people, right? We're going to keep people, which is good, and we're getting more people. Believe it or not, this is in a better place than we were this meeting last year.
Yeah.
With openings. So again, it's just relooking at how can we restructure. We're going to have staff in sub-separate at the Marsh and the, the Branch Street overseeing two classrooms again. We're working with the union, but we're in a better place with how, what we can do to make that a much smoother transition. So, you know, we, we've been having those conversations all summer as well.
So to get back to my question at some point, do you think?
Yeah, we probably will have to restructure how we even look at it. Yeah.
Yeah. I know there used to be a pipeline from Northeastern or BU with the school psychs.
Yeah, I think Tufts, I think has a good program.
Tufts, it was Tufts.
Yeah, I think they have a good program. BU, I'm not sure, but.
I think it was Tufts.
I think Mr. Cracker, you know, advocates all over. A lot of those Boston schools filter right into BPS, Boston Public Schools. And so it's hard to get those folks back out.
Okay. Well, thank you. Have we, okay, one last thing. Didn't we get a big push a few years ago when you posted on our, the, the communications the principal sent home? Saying, you know, we have job openings?
Well, it's definitely in my newsletter going home this week. I mean, I put it at the end saying, we're still looking. Here's the link to, you know, our employment. So I'm, I'm, that's the last bullet on my letter to all the whole district. So I'm hoping folks, you know, just recirculate that, you know, share it back out. We're still looking for support staff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to old business and other pending matters on the agenda. We have none. Next, under new business, we need a motion in a second to approve the wellness policy. This will be the first read.
So moved.
Motion from the vice chair, second from Member DeZoglio. Discussion? Vice Chair?
After reading the, the wellness policy, my biggest concern is that there is nothing in there, and I, when my children were young, it was there, that recess could not be taken away as a punishment. It got taken out somewhere along the line. It is not back in there. And I have a real problem with that. So I know I for one want to make a friendly amendment to add that line back in to the wellness policy.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so we have the motion from the vice chair and the second from Member Shabili. This is for the proposed friendly amendment. Discussion regarding the proposed amendment. We'll hear from, let's hear from the second and then we'll hear from Member DeZoglio, Member Maxwell.
So the second was primarily for the conversation. And I know that Member Keegan and I have had this conversation in the past, past couple of days. My concern is where do we have the line for training and discretion? As a child, and I'm sure this is going to come as a shock to many of you, but I lost my fair share of recess, which doesn't surprise me. There were some of them I probably 100% deserve to lose. Now, should we be taking away recess from the kid on the IEP, you know, who had a, I don't, I don't, I don't know the appropriate word here, but had an episode and, I don't know, did something. No, there is another appropriate mechanism for dealing with that behavior. Taking recess away is not. But taking that leverage away from a teacher, whether or not they exercise that, that option, the threat that is there to show children that, you know, this is why you have to behave. We talk and you see in the news and we see on Facebook that the ability to discipline is so small and being able to take away recess under the right circumstances, I think is important. But I also don't know how you police that.
Well, may I respond?
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Because I think I don't disagree with either of you at this point. We had it sort of memorialized and then we do it and then we don't do it. And now it's not really written anywhere anymore. So I'm, I'm not opposed to having it in writing in this policy, which is where it lives. So I'm, I'm not opposed to having it in writing in this policy, which is where it lived in, in previous years. I think the discretion comes, that it needs to be, I think the, the conversations I've had with the administrators is, it can't be sort of the, the place where kids are being punished, right? So if something happens in the classroom, they can't get recess taken away. But if the problem is happening at recess, or they're being aggressive at recess, that's where I have a conversation with the APs and the principals that are like, wait, I'm keeping the kid who's the aggress, you know, like having a problem, right, a, a behavior problem, if you would, at recess. And so doesn't that make sense that I'm like keeping that kid away from that negative situation that's happening in that space? So I think, you know, those are some of the conversations that I'm having with the principals about that, and I think that is not a teacher discretion. That's a, that's an administrative discretion about impeding of what is that discipline that's happening for the kid who's being referred to because of X, Y, and Z, right?
But if we draw a hard line in this policy, that discretion is removed.
Right. Right. And how do we, how do we, how do we provide that so it's, it doesn't become the easiest way, right? Because I think that's also part of it. It's an easy way to be like, well, I'm going to take away recess for five days. You're like, wait, what? Right? So, but if there is a problem that's happening at recess, and we need to remove that student because they are that privilege of being able to play, they're not handling that correct, whatever, I'm simplifying all of it.
Right.
You know, that may be appropriate. How do we memorialize situational pieces? I'm not quite sure, that's really not, I don't know how we like say that.
But, so, okay, I hear what you're saying, and I really truly do. But if a kid is misbehaving in ELA, are you going to take ELA away from the kid? And I, and I say that not tongue-in-cheek, but seriously, because our kids have 20 minutes a day to learn how to use social skills. And recess is the only time that those kids have a chance to practice those skills. And every other part of the day is completely structured. So if we're, if we're taking those 20 minutes away when they're practicing those skills, and it's the only time of the day that they get to practice those skills, it's a subject for a lot of kids. And so to say, oh, well, if recess is the problem, we take it away, well, then I say, then if ELA is the problem, we're going to take ELA away. And that's crazy. You would never do that. And so it shouldn't be looked at any differently than ELA, because for some kids, social skills are more important than ELA sometimes.
Yeah.
Member DeZoglio, the member Maxwell.
So this is when I'm going to go to a person that's in the classroom, which we do take recess away. And it's to the extreme where it starts with, you lose 10 minutes, you're going to lose half of recess. So you have your 10 minutes of your social skills. It gets to the point where the disruptive behavior is constantly in the classroom, where we go, okay, now you lost recess for the full day. And then if it goes further, you get a detention. The reason why I, I agree with they need, that's why when I take recess away, it's always 10 minutes, unless it gets to the point where I have to do a write-up to the dean of discipline, and then he decides, no, you're going to lose recess for the rest of the day. But I'm allowed to take at least half of their recess away when they're disruptive in my classroom. The thing I like about that is it has control of my classroom, in the sense of the kids know that I can take away half their recess, in which allows classroom management to proceed in a certain way. Now, to member Chabilla's point, there, there are kids on IEPs, but at the same time, you might give that kid, again, again, every kid's different, way I work with it, I go, go for a walk, go, go take a five-minute break. If the, if the person, if that student continues to be disruptive, then I send them to the dean of discipline and they get their recess taken away. Because it's now gotten three, four warnings, to the point where it's like, okay, we're going to call your mom, and your mom decides, okay. And a lot of times, parents go, take his recess away. Absolutely. I think a lot of the problems, and I was also going to discuss this with policy, where it comes to detention, where everything's falling on administrators, if you want teachers to have control of their classrooms, they should have discretion of maybe giving a detention or giving a lunch detention. However, they're responsible, same thing with me and my school. If I give a detention, I'm staying after school. I'm not giving it to someone else. I, you gave that classroom without the dean of discipline, you're staying after school, but you have to notify everybody, notify the parents. And I do, say, okay, your son has a detention for this reason, and if they disagree, then it goes to the dean of discipline. So like, there are processes and mechanisms, and I totally get what you're saying, but you need the teachers to have the ability to discipline kids that they're being disruptive in the classroom. That's, that's how learning has to work. If you don't, if a kid causes disruption in the classroom, then guess what? Every other kid goes, he can get away with it, I can get away with it. And then it's a cycle. So that's just my opinion, I get both sides. I'm just saying from a third, the, the person that's in the classroom, and I get, I know a lot of teachers at home will agree with me, I think like taking, we all got our lunch recess taken away, but I think half of it, I'm willing to compromise in certain degrees with 10 minutes or half of it. So, that's all.
Member Maxwell.
So I am on board for the amendment, however, it's concerning to me that we're talking about this wellness policy when we already have a wellness policy, ADF, that we're approving tonight. So I'm confused at which policy we're talking about, because the one that is being presented right now, that one's very wordy, and there's a lot to it. The one that we got from MASC that we're approving tonight will contradict it, and everything that's in MASC's policy is in the policy that was created by these people, sorry. But it's less wordy and it's more to the point.
So good point.
Yeah. It's just concerning that no one else noticed that.
I'm, good point. I'm just going to let Mr. Fraddy bring, like, tell you sort of how this was developed and the approval process at the state level, and then we can make a decision about MASC versus this one.
Hi, everybody. I think everybody knows me, I'm Bob Fraddy, food service director. I don't think that you know Brenda Noon. She is the assistant food service director. She's been with us for a year now. She's been a huge asset, registered dietitian. She's great to have on board on staff, so she's been, she's played a crucial role in, in this whole process. So just to give you some background, back in January, we applied for, it's a, it's called the Massachusetts School Wellness Coaching Program. And the reason why we did that, it's, it's, it's sponsored by the John Stockton Institute out of Framingham State College and DESI. Not every school district is accepted. First year, two years ago, we, we tried and we weren't accepted. The program is very hard to get into. We did get into it, we, you know, we went through everything, all the different meetings, got the certification. And so the reason for that is, is because the current policy that we have online now was actually revised in 2021. So DESI requires every three years to do an evaluation of the policy. There's a huge criteria that we have to go through. So this program assigns you a wellness coach, that's a professor at Framingham State College. We do monthly meetings, she was part of our wellness committee meetings that we had. Brenda made some phone calls, we got the, the, the original wellness committee back together. We did send out different emails to like guidance councils, like we're looking for students to get involved too. We weren't able to, to get students, so we went with the existing wellness committee. Like I said, we, we did the whole evaluation that took, gosh, that took a couple of hours to go through our wellness policy. It identified where we didn't meet the new requirements for wellness policy, and where we did. Where we didn't outweighed, where we, you know, the ones that we did meet the requirements. So basically, what we did was, we took, we were going to, the committee was going to re, you know, to look at and make modifications to the existing policy. It was determined that because it was so involved, and it was so piecemeal, and was so wordy, the original one, that we would start from scratch, using the evaluation format to hit every single topic, okay? So now, so we did a draft that goes back to Framingham State College, they review it, they give us some feedback. We go back to the committee, we make the changes. And then the way the process works is, once the John Stockton Institute approves it, or reviews it and approves, then it goes on to DESI, in this department within DESI that also reviewed it. They had one change, I believe, that they wanted to add. And then so Nicole Goodman, that works at DESI, she approved it, or reviewed it, not approved. So it was to get it ready for, for the school committee to approve. So that's how we got here tonight. So I hope that answers the question. I don't know about the other policy that you're, that you're speaking about.
Yeah, it's a new policy that MASC came, you know, brought to the subcommittee. The problem I have is the wellness committee doesn't create policy. The wellness committee is in charge of the implementation and evaluation of the policy. So I think that the policy that MASC is, it's, it's by law, it's, it has everything in the policy that the wellness committee suggested, and then some. So, I mean, I, I know in your specific policy, it mentioned celebrations and the fact that absolutely no celebrations. However, in the MASC policy that they suggested, refreshments served at party celebrations and meetings during the school day, it, it actually can happen. So, I, I mean, unless I'm wrong, MASC does things through, by law. So I, I would just hope that we can, with Lori's friendly amendment, approve the original policy that we've been working with MASC for, only because it has everything that the wellness committee did suggest in theirs, with a few changes. And again, wellness committee doesn't create policy, they just implement it and evaluate it, so.
Well, I know when Jeff Osgood was here, I believe, when the, he was the, the chair, I believe that he, they created that last policy.
Correct.
So I would suggest if, if instead of putting the friendly amendment on this, we, unless, well, no, because if, if we're going to accept MASC, then you would reject this policy and vote no on it, and then on the MASC, then you can make the friendly amendment. That would be my suggestion. Unless people are deciding to vote on this one a yes, then I would suggest we put the friendly amendment on. But I, I'm going to go with the MASC.
So we have an active motion on the floor?
Yeah.
There's been a second, so we need a vote on the friendly amendment, and then we'll see where that lies.
Unless she removes it. Yeah.
Well, so, just a minute. We were, we have the motion about the friendly amendment on the floor?
Sure.
Okay. So we're withdrawing?
I withdraw.
And I am going to make a motion to table the wellness policy presented, as well as the section within the MASC packet. So that way, both wellness policies are tabled together. So that counts as a first read for this, it'll count as a first read for that, and we can revisit it next week when we have more time, in two weeks when we have more time.
So just to be clear, though, we're only talking about, we're talking about 6G on the agenda, which is this wellness policy aspect?
Yes.
So we'll get to anything else?
Yeah. And we can, we can visit this potentially tomorrow in our subcommittee, policy subcommittee meeting.
We have that tomorrow. So that's great, we can ask Alicia the questions, yes.
All right, so the friendly amendment has been withdrawn, now we have a motion on the floor to table this. Do we have the second?
Second.
Seconds from member DeZoglio. All those in favor of tabling the wellness policy?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so it's tabled. We now need a motion and a second to approve the PK through eight handbook and the nine through 12 handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from the vice chair, second from member DeZoglio. Discussion. Member Maxwell.
So I, I am going to say no on the approval of the handbook, only because there is that amendment that needs to be made, that we haven't had a discussion on for the Supreme Court ruling, and...
That's this.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were just approving the whole handbook.
No, no, no. We're discussing...
We are with the amendment, that's exactly what we're doing. We're approving the whole handbook with this amendment.
With the added language that I put on the memo.
Correct.
Because I have to do that, or you have to do that.
Right. I don't need to be spoken down to, but...
Read the packet.
Definitely read the packet.
All right, let's keep, let's keep order.
So it says, consistent with Massachusetts regulations, the Methuen schools through its curricula and materials encourages respect for the human and civil rights of all individuals, regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation in accordance with district guidelines. Families may request information from the building principal on available accommodations related to the curriculum content. My only concern with this is that nowhere in this does it say that this is based off of a religious exemption. And I think that if we're going to say that people or families are able to opt out of a certain curriculum, then we should offer that to all of our families, because with this inclusion process of it's against your religion, you're excluding people who don't practice a religion. And, and people have different beliefs, whether it's moral beliefs, religious beliefs, you know, there are different beliefs, and, and I think that if we're going to offer an opt-out option, it needs to be across the board. I think that if we're going to talk about curriculum, I've never, on, in my time here, approved an LGBTQ curriculum. I'm not sure if anybody else could give me the date of when that was approved. So right now, the district doesn't even have an LGBTQ curriculum, so I'm not sure why we would even have to be voting on this. That's not the policy that we're interjecting, this is. And in this, it does not say, based off of religious exemption. So that would be my only point of, that, that's the only thing I wanted to bring up. I, will be a no on the whole handbook, just based off of us not accommodating all of our students, we're just accommodating one. I think it's, I think to say that we're going to honor something based off of religion and exclude things like Christmas and Halloween and Easter and all of those things because we can't practice certain religions, I think that we're excluding an entire population of people. I don't know. So, so that's why I, I will vote no.
I think, would it be helpful if Dr. Golobski and I go through the document that we added, so that people who are watching know what we're talking about?
Probably a good idea. Yes.
Okay, so there's a memo that I emailed to you, but we put it on your table as additional information, which I think is helpful. And I apologize, because I know that there was information sent out from MASC to probably all of you. And so just, again, for all of you and for the public watching, I think it's important for people to know what we're talking about, and where this, the italics language came from that we're asking to be put in the handbook at this point. But maybe Lisa, if you want to start, and then I'll jump in. And it's a Supreme Court ruling decision that we are looking at right now with no additional, we don't have, you know, any other guidelines or information from like DESI or our own state attorney general at this point. So this is why this language is being recommended at this time, so that we comply with a Supreme Court ruling that is national. This is not a state ruling.
Sure. So I'll do my, my best to accurately summarize the ruling and the situation. So essentially, there was a district in Maryland who, in their younger elementary grades, had introduced inclusive curricula, specifically LGBTQ. grades, had introduced inclusive curricula, specifically LGBTQ curricula, in the form of storybooks, in which there weren't just characters for representation, but thematically, and with the intent of the lesson related to topics and themes of LGBTQ community and belief. Now, initially, the school had notified families prior to the introduction of each book, and offered opt-out options. As time went on, they stopped doing that, and that's when a group of parents came together and started to move it through the chain of courts. Two lower courts refused to grant the injunction and say that the school needed to, in fact, notify families and offer the opt-out. And what the Supreme Court case did was to say just that. And so, I included in this most recent information here, like the superintendent said, there isn't any specific guidance from the federal or state in terms of Massachusetts government at this point as to how it should be handled. So, what the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, along with MASC, and then every school law firm in the state of Massachusetts convened and agreed upon this language, which is suggested to be part of the handbook. And what they agreed on, until there is clearer direction, is that it needs to be very clear to teachers, administrators, parents, families in the district, what this actually means, what the ruling says that they are entitled to, and how to go about doing that. And so, I wrote in this memo that it's not a matter of representation, it really comes down to the intent of the lesson and the depth to which thematically related topics are discussed. So, it could be, some examples might be, the analysis of a poem at the high school level, and then really specific prompts, asking potentially a student to consider the speaker's point of view as maybe their identity or outlook changed over time. I'm just saying, that might be an example of, of something that a teacher would need to notify a family of, and if the family felt as though they wanted to opt out, based on their religious beliefs, it suggested that they would then need to contact the building principal. And it's very clear, in many, in many spots, it says in writing, communicate that their wish to opt out is due to their religious belief, which would then go to the decision-maker from the principal. Dr. Quong had suggested that that be someone like me, in my role. And then it's also stated very clearly in the guidance that was developed most recently by that group in Massachusetts, that legal counsel is contacted or referenced to make sure that we are following the appropriate protocol. Because there are spots, as you could imagine, where there is some level of subjectivity in terms of sincere religious belief, which is phrases such, and also intent of the lesson and the content itself. So, that's where we are now, in terms of that.
So just to clarify for discussion, my understanding is that there aren't any other broad changes to the handbook, it's simply an adjustment to reflect the Supreme Court case. Member DeZoglio?
So the question I have, that's where I got confused with this, this law, where they said a designated person, like, so if I say I'm religious, I send it to you, but then you send it to a legal counsel, is there a chance that that legal counsel says, "Well, my religious belief doesn't fit that for me to opt out of the situation?"
I mean, I can't tell you yes or no, but there's, there's likely not, I mean, this is why this is gonna get, this is why this is the recommendation right now, and that we consult with legal counsel, because who am I to question somebody's religious belief, right? If it's explained, and there has to be one person who hears the same stories and makes the same kind of decision-making protocol, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
So, Member DeZoglio, to answer your question?
It happens now. I mean, it happens now.
I've been following this, and there are already planned appeals, because who is gonna be out there to object to somebody's religious views? What defines curriculum? There are a thousand issues, and there are already groups out there planning to appeal this. It'll get appealed, some of them will win, some of them will lose, who knows what's gonna happen? This whole thing is, from a legal perspective, half-baked, because the Supreme Court doesn't know what curriculum means. They don't apply it the same way the people in classrooms, like you as a teacher, would apply it.
Yep.
It's just real. So, unfortunately, and I, ever since we learned about this, what was it, Wednesday, from, well, I learned about it Wednesday from Alicia during our call, I've been listening to a bunch of these legal podcasts, trying to learn about it, because I have an opinion. But, everybody says this is going to change several times over the next couple of months, because there are going to be appeals to several aspects of it, win or lose, I mean, who knows? But, I think it's too soon to tell, and there are going, there's going to be a lot of litigation that comes out of it. So, a lot of it's gonna be conjecture and hypothetical until that all settles.
And I think in the meantime of all of that, this is, we're trying to put something in place that is making sure that we, you know, are protecting what we're supposed to do, have a protocol in place to be able to move forward.
When you look at it, who, like...
For DeZoglio?
Yeah. So, like I said, that thank you, Member Shabili, because when I read it, I was like, well, I should be able just to say, it's my religious belief, I don't want my kid to learn it, and then there shouldn't be any discussion? Like, that's how, because of the First Amendment, like freedom of religion. So when I heard this, that's why I'm asking these questions, because the way it looks like a person could determine, well, yeah, but that doesn't fit with your religious belief. That's, that's the way I looked at it. But overall, I look at the situation, and the opt-out, I do believe in it, in the sense of a parent should be making that decision.
Right.
At the end of the day, and I get it, and to go off of what Member Shabili's wife said, I totally get about bullying and acceptance and all that, and I said, and again, I don't wanna go against what she's saying, but I feel like even if they're being taught that, what we should be really teaching them is how to respect other people. Like, in the, no, 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 but what I'm saying, I'm just going off of, and again, if Kelsey said, I just took what she said, and I feel like even if you teach someone this in a classroom, what they are being taught at home overwhelms what's happening in the classroom. Because that's who's raising them. You can, at the end of the day, I think it's more of, like, you just need to accept people who they are. And I think we've learned that growing up, and I think we've come far. But the real problem is, is, and I get it, mental health, and I, and I understand that, because I deal with it with elementary and middle school kids, the problem is, is not teaching them the curriculum of, well, these people are this way, and these people are that. It's, the bullying needs to stop, and there needs to be more discipline with dealing with bullying. And I feel like the state of Massachusetts has fallen away by their wayside when it comes to bullying. I think they need to be more severe on it. I think, I think at the end of the day, police should be automatically involved now, instead of going through a whole little process. I feel like that's where, and again, that's my opinion, and I, that's where I stand on the issue. But at the end of the day, I totally get what, this is a very difficult subject to some people at home and here, but I feel like there are more major factors involved than you teaching a lesson, and it's gonna make everybody get along. It's more what's happening at the house that's gonna define that student, too.
So just to share some thoughts about how to, you know, I guess, guide this discussion. So I think the intent of the administration is to establish a defined protocol based on the current law of the land as it exists today, as we head into the new school year. Just to share a brief thought about this, and I know it's a very personal, emotional type of conversation that is being had out there in the country about issues like this right now. For me, as a parent, when it comes to raising my child, I believe in the importance of emphasizing concepts like inclusion, diversity, empathy, compassion, and community. I don't believe that we should be dictating necessarily to kids what to believe, but I believe that the concepts that I just mentioned are important in the context of showing our kids how to think critically about the world around them. And as parents, the choices that my wife and I make about our child's education, decisions that we make together, they may not be the same choices that other parents might make. And so I think that the challenge in front of us, some may say that inclusion and enhanced parental involvement are on opposite sides of the political spectrum, so to speak. I disagree with that. I actually think that they are not mutually exclusive. I think that we can have this culture of inclusion in our schools while also involving parents more. And this brought up a thought that I had today, and actually connected with Member Willet about this. So in New York City, mind you, I just said in New York City, they actually have a mechanism by which they, I guess, go out of their way to advertise the various options that parents have as it relates to involvement with their kids. In New York City, of all places, they have what they call a parent's bill of rights, the opportunity for a district to just be fully transparent about what children are learning in the classroom, and the various options that are available from a parental standpoint. And so I think there's, there's a creative way for us to balance this conversation in a way that makes sense all around, while living within the law of the land as it exists today, and establishing a protocol going forward, so that we have something in place. I believe that's the heart of the administration, and so I just wanted to share that as part of, maybe a way to help guide the conversation. Do we have, Member Willet?
Thank you. And again, I broached the topic of having a parent's bill of rights, and something that, I commend you for initiating a draft of that proposal. And my concern always is, when we have the sex education, it's strictly an opt-out option. Religion is never invoked in that. So that's part of Massachusetts state law, is that when it involves human sexuality, and a parent decides they want to opt out, it has nothing to do with religion.
Right.
So I think this issue gets clouded, because ultimately, it's the parent that will make the decision. Now, I have to emphasize respectfully, is that I have my kids participate in sex education. I have no problem with age-appropriate curriculum. So I don't want to be grouped with religious fanatics, or people that have a narrow viewpoint. I have a deep respect for that community. My best friend out of high school came out to me, in a very difficult time, at Central Catholic. So I don't want to hear anybody come back to me, that because I have a certain viewpoint about supporting parents, might want to opt out, that somehow I engage in bigotry. That's far from the situation. What I'm concerned about is that the parents are losing their rights to educate their children. And sometimes the children don't have the option to go to private and parochial schools. And to me, ultimately, it's not about religion, because sometimes I have concerns about religion. And I hope that there is an ultimate universal morality, that we accept people who are different than us, and it's a journey, and we take it based on Martin Luther King. We judge based on the content of a person's character, not the color of their skin, not their sexual orientation, not their gender identity. So it is a balancing act, and we have to find a middle path. And I think that parents' bill of rights is something that we should explore. But again, if you look at the sexual education law of Massachusetts, there's an opt-out provision, parents are notified, and it has nothing to do with religion. So the same thing should be applied here. Now, if that gets tested by the Massachusetts government, which can't even approve an audit of the legislature, I don't have a problem having that as a test case. Because ultimately, if you look at the language, it talks about human sexuality, and curriculum in that community talks about human sexuality to a certain extent. And that's their identity, and I can respect that. But ultimately, there's an opt-out provision that has nothing to do with religion. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Member Shabili?
We need to make sure that we are all on the same page. What we are voting on is to include language, because of a Supreme Court case that says we need to give parents the right to opt out of curriculum that is LGBTQ for religious purposes.
Say that.
I understand that. I can read too, remember? But that's what is being directed of us by the Supreme Court. A bunch of groups got together and put together this language, Member Maxwell's gonna be shocked, but I agree with her. I think the language is garbage. It doesn't say what it's supposed to say. Also, Ms. Golovski, do we teach evolution in our science classes?
Yes.
Are we gonna opt out of that for religious reasons, too?
No.
Because that's, that's anti-religion. Are we going to, one of the books that was stated in that case was the, the...
Prince?
The prince in the, what was it? The prince and the knight, which I have at home, and I forgot on the desk when I left. And the whole story is, the prince's family is trying to find him a nice princess, and he can't find one that speaks to him. And then there's a dragon, and the knight comes in and slays the dragon, and the prince falls in love with the knight, and they ride off, and they're happily ever after. Oh, now I ruined the ending for you, sorry. The prince and the knight live happily ever after. Do we have to remove that book from our classrooms now? Because the books are gonna make the people gay? But that's, that's what this case says. That's what all of the legal scholars are talking about. West Virginia Legal School, Harvard Legal Review, that's what, that's what they're saying. I'm not making it up, I'm, I just repeat things.
So it's not a matter of removing or changing our curriculum? It's...
Pretending that gay and lesbian and transgender people don't exist.
What this is asking us to do is send a notification to families, and then the language that we're looking at here, if you're specific to what we're looking to suggest and add to the handbook, it talks about, through curriculum materials, Methuen Public Schools engages respect for the human and civil rights of all individuals, and then later, that families may request information from the building principal on available accommodations. Not promising anything of the sort, but just making it transparent to all families that, of course, please feel free to ask. Whether or not it will be granted, I don't know. But also, like, you can learn more about what your student is learning in class. So a very...
But what, what we're doing here is getting rid of the inclusion of a good portion of our population, to just pretend they don't exist.
Yeah, I was even thinking, you know, I was speaking a lot with department chairs and supervisors, because there's a lot to our curriculum. There's the core curriculum, there's supplementary pieces, there's optional pieces, and I wanted to make sure that I had a good sense of all the tools that even are suggested within a curriculum. And Roger Lanfest, who's our social studies department chair at the high school, brought up this elective class we call Our Story, which centers the history and stories of marginalized groups. And so there's a unit on LGBTQ in terms of historical content, civil rights, McCarthyism, hate crimes, gender identity, and also other historically marginalized groups, Black Americans, Asian Americans, Native Americans, and those are units of study that students can choose to delve into. So, really, something that we appreciate in the district, I think we could all agree, is the diversity that we have here. And this, this... And this, this case very clearly says that it's not an opt-out of experiencing diversity and being around diverse peers and engaging in that representation. And where it gets to that, that, I'll say what could be a muddy piece, is if there's amendment or court cases, Supreme Court cases are discussed, discussed regularly in social studies classes, is that something that we would notify of or not, and where does the line become drawn? So I think the language that's suggested is just saying that there, there can be a discussion with your building principal about content if you're concerned, and teachers will have notified you, which is historical, historical practice at the high school, if there's an element of even a novel that we, we suspect students may find triggering. There may be a letter that goes home to notify parents, hey, we're gonna be reading this novel, there's a couple paragraphs on this topic, if this is concerning to you, reach out, we might be able to offer a supplement, things like that. So that, that is past practice. Singling out, I think, this one demographic of our student population is what's, what's, I think, troubling some of the members.
I also wanna share that, so Attorney Joyce was involved in helping to write this, and I did have some contact with him. They, of course, support the language because it is a little muddy and could change, but they also are here to make sure that our school committees are doing what we're supposed to do so that we follow some of the rules we're supposed to follow. They are also working on some internal letters and protocols for us, too, that would help us when we're notifying families of the curriculum and, you know, internally, how are we making those decisions and making those calls? I just wanna put that out there, 'cause I did have some communication with him after Wednesday.
Hypothetically, what happens if the body votes no?
I mean, if the body votes no, I guess there, I would be very, I'd probably still have to do it unless the, your body, I mean, if you guys vote no, and then we do nothing, we do nothing, I guess, but then it's gotta be clear that the body has instructed me to not execute any further. I would imagine. I mean, I don't, that's putting, that's putting us and you guys probably in a precarious position.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind, too, is that in the event of successful appeals and any changes to that, you know, we, we, as long as I think ultimately, the, the point is to stay in keeping with the law.
And often, nothing. Biden administration had Title IX regulations that were nullified by further court decisions and by the incoming administration. So this is still a fluid situation, okay? So we will adapt, absolutely.
No, I said I don't understand your connection.
Okay. We had to rush to approve Biden's Title IX regulations. It was like, it was gonna be the end of the world if we didn't approve Biden's Title IX regulations, which were then partially nullified by further court decision, and then when the incoming administration came in, they removed the rest of that executive order. So I operate, again, from the premise that either you have the Supreme Court make a decision or you have an act of Congress. When you have these executive orders, I warned that we shouldn't be rushing down that path 'cause things are changed and things become fluid. This could be the same thing. My original premise still remains, sexual education in Massachusetts has an opt-out, has nothing to do with religion. It affords it to the parents. The same thing should apply here, but, you know, it's up to the body.
But there's a big difference between executing on Title IX, which is sexual harassment protections in our buildings versus, well, yes, but further marginalizing a group of people who...
Again, according to your opinion, and I'm starting to get sick of it because...
You can be sick of my opinion all you like.
I can, I was trying to be respectful of everybody's opinion, right? I'm not marginalizing anyone.
Can I say something?
We need to keep order. We need everybody to respect each other's speaking time. Just to clarify the motion, so in going through the agenda, I just wanna clarify that the agenda states that this is approval of the PK through eight handbook and nine through 12 handbook. That is the motion that I read into the record. Just to clarify what we're talking about here, this is a motion to approve the PK through eight and nine through 12 handbooks as currently posted with the one addition of the language needed to comply with the recent Supreme Court ruling in Mahmoud versus Taylor. The secretary provided me with the clarification, just to state for the record, ultimately to clarify what we're doing here. So what we need to do at this point is, do we have any other further discussion?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yeah, I, now I'm really in those muddy waters. So the language we are discussing is the italic, right? And that is it?
That's it. That's the only language that...
But I have a follow-up.
That, no, but, but that is it. So when I look at this and I go, okay, you know, it's nothing, pardon me?
Purposely ambiguous.
Yeah. That's where I, that's where I struggle, but I understand there is a reason why ambiguity can be a productive thing as we continue down this road. Okay, I just needed to clarify that. Thank you.
Member Maxwell?
Okay, so when we were in the subcommittee meeting, we did ask the question of, you know, in this policy, it says nothing about opting out due to religion. The response to that was, I have to follow that by law so that when parents ask specifically about the material and we go through the process, and the material is that they don't want their child exposed to the LGBTQ-related, then Lisa or we have to come up with an alternative. The law is that I have to do that. We have to give parents the permission, the understanding that they have to ask, and I can't just guess. If we have kids continuously opting out of public school curriculum, I'm gonna have to pull in wonders and stories, and now the teachers are going to have two kids who have the opt-out of whatever their story and reading is for their actual curriculum that we have and figure out an alternative. There's just going to be a lot of work with this and how it goes. So unless a parent knows that they have to ask and that it's a religious exemption, it's, that's the only problem I have with this. I don't even have a problem with the wording. I don't. I have a problem with that we're saying that it is, and that part, she, you know, the other thing that was said is, is that part is a procedural part, and that's why it's not in the policy. So if, if that's the case, then we need to talk about this wording because I would, I would much rather approve a policy that says that our parents can opt-out and it has nothing to do with religious exemption. Yes, by law, we have to offer it as a religious exemption, but why can't we take it one step further and allow an opt-in for people that don't want this taught or whatever to their kids? We do it with sex ed, we do it with mental health opt-outs, we, we do offer opt-outs. So I'm not sure why this one specifically is the one that we're gonna say, well, this one has to be a religious exemption. That's the only problem I have with this. That's all.
So I, I totally agree that it should be for both options, religions and the opt-out. But the way it works, if that's the federal law, the state law...
But we're offering it.
Okay, I'm just explaining, okay? And anybody can correct me on this. The way it works, the federal law for this specific topic is this, the law, the state can't over the federal law and add on to that law. They can only go, if the law was, uh, rise it backwards because the state can't do more than the federal law.
No, but we could do in addition to the federal law.
To this law, probably not, no, no, because that's what the Supreme Court said. But I totally agree with you. It should be allowed with the option, but we're voting on...
Well, that's procedural, it's not in the policy.
Yeah, but what I'm agreeing with you on is how is the procedure gonna go? Because people might not know of this option, like, let's be real, like, not many people are watching these meetings, okay? So what is the procedure of how you're gonna release this to the public right before school starts? Are you gonna go, like, through, through the campus, or how is that gonna go, too? Because I think that's also your concern, is people not getting the notification that they have this option. 'Cause kids, you bring a permission slip home, we all know kids throw it in their bag and they go, I'm not gonna give it to my parents. Like, I deal with it all the time. So is it gonna be a permission slip? That's another, right? Is that one of your concerns, too?
I think that the whole point is it's in the handbook, so when parents ask, we'll answer. And they, I, I should say, I mean, this happens already. This is why, like, every school district does this already. When parents call us and ask about our curriculum, there are things that we do accommodate based on different things, ideologies, religion, we do that already. So I don't, I don't foresee any additional, like, notice. It's in the handbook. If parents have concerns and issues about a particular topic, they absolutely will be asking us for that. I'm also looking at the time, Mayor.
Do we have any other discussion? So we're gonna take a yes or no vote on the proposed language regarding the accommodations.
Mayor, who gave the motion in the second? I'm sorry, I missed it. Was there one?
The folks who did that will have to refresh my memory.
She's voting on the italic.
I'm sorry?
The folks who did that, I, I, at this, I didn't take a note of who did that.
I believe it was Member Keegan who motioned, and I seconded it.
Yes, Member Vice Chair Keegan and then Member Shabilia. We'll take a roll call vote on this measure.
Member Dizaglio?
No.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
No.
Member Shabilia?
No.
Member Willett?
No.
Mayor Borghardt?
To adopt this, a yes. The measure fails. Next, we're on to the Crest Board member and delegate measure here for fiscal year 26. We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Dizaglio, second from Member Shabilia. Discussion?
Quick question. Does it have, and I'm not saying it shouldn't, but does it have to be Brandy or, or...
It could be one of you.
Oh, okay.
But there's a lot of meetings.
It's either me or a school committee member.
Gotcha.
Is my understanding. There are a few school committee members on the board of 16, and the rest are superintendents. I don't think there, there's any other, like, school administrator on it.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. We're now moving on.
Mayor, I, I'm so sorry, we actually have to end the meeting 'cause it's 10 o'clock. So everything else that's on the agenda at this point will be moved to August 25th, but we do have to have an executive session tonight, so if we close it, let the kids leave. They're the ones that need to leave at 10:00. Colleen and I will have a quick executive session with you.
Okay.
And then, again, all of this will just be, I just made sure there's nothing timely, I mean, like, that will prevent us from opening school. All the contracts and, and these can be done on August 25th, so we'll just lift this and put it on that agenda.
Okay. So at this point, what I will do is we're gonna fast forward to the executive session. So with no further business to discuss as it relates to tonight's agenda, with everything else, move to the following meeting. We need a motion and a second to adjourn the business workshop session of the Methuen School Committee.
So moved.
For August 11, 2025, and enter into executive session. We have the motion from Member Dizaglio.
Second.
The second is from the vice chair pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares Unit B. We will not reconvene into the open session at the conclusion of the executive session. We'll take a roll call to enter executive session.
Member Dizaglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. So the time is 10:02. Our open meeting is adjourned and will now enter executive session.
Good night, Methuen.